Okay, you guys all ready? Let's call the council meeting order. Please take role.
Councilmember Bruce Bassett, councilmember Jane Rom, councilmember Mike Cero, councilmember Mike Grady, councilmember Dan Grous, deputy mayor El Jenki, mayor Jim Pearman.
Here. Great, and thank you all for being patient. We had a study session beforehand and there was a little confusion on food and they get very grumpy if they don't eat. So now they're less grumpy and they're fed, right? So we can get on with our meeting. With that, we have a very special evening tonight. Lots of young men who've just achieved the rank of Eagle Scout and it is a significant thing for our community and what they have done for our community. And there's a letter, it is a letter that we've signed for all of you, but I thought I'd like to read it for you. And you get a copy of this and also a city pen in just a moment and we're going to ask you individually to come up and tell us a little bit about your project and your contribution to our community. But basically it says, "It is with great pleasure that I recognize your accomplishment of obtaining the rank of Eagle Scout. It is no small feat. As a fellow Eagle Scout, I welcome you into a very special group of Scouts and citizens. Even though I achieved my Eagle Scout way back in 1973, Richard Nixon signed mine. That's how far it goes back. It has followed me all my life and I'm sure that this will follow you. Some of the finest community servants, managers, elected officials, and people I've worked with have been fellow Eagles. I have yet to say I've met a fellow Eagle that I have gone, "How did that happen?" So it's a very special group and you will find that out. And one of the things that's very interesting that now I'm in the 50s, that I run into people my age and then we get into the subject of Eagle Scouts and those who acquired Eagle, very proud of it, those who almost acquired it and didn't quite get there, it's like, wow, that was a big unfinished thing in my life and I can't go back and undo it. And it is a very significant loss for them. You can see that. So again, when you turn 18, for those people who don't know this, that closes the door and you can't get your Eagle after 18. And so to do all the things and all the community service and all the activities it takes to go from the ranks all the way up and acquire all the merit badges and do that before you're 18 is a huge accomplishment and it will pay a lot of dividends in your life. So with that, I would like to introduce the leader of the Scouts and then we're going to start hearing a little bit about the Scouts.
Thanks. I'm Diane Pottinger and this is, I believe, my fifth year or sixth year I've been coming here to let you know the report of the Eagle Scouts this last year. Tonight I brought with you the, I'm the Cascade District Advancements Chairman for Boy Scouts and the Seattle Council. Tonight I brought with you nine of the 11 boys that earned their rank of Eagle this last year in 2011. And as Mayor Pearman said, that these guys had to advance through many ranks. They had to earn 21 merit badges and they had to plan and execute a service project. The majority of these Scouts waited until pretty close to their 18th birthday to get these things done. I'm sure the parents that are here will say it was a little stressful event for most of those, but we don't care at this point anymore. They've already got it and they're up here to tell you about it now. So Zach, you want to start off?
Yeah.
You guys want to stand up and follow over here by Zach?
All right. So I'm Zach O'Neil. I live on 7619 West Mercer Way. So I achieved rank of Eagle for Troop 66 probably a year ago. And what I did was I went to Sambika and put in the fence posts for a new fence for the play field. And then another Eagle Scout completed the second half of the project by stringing in the fence. And I guess what I have to say about it is it's an enormous honor for just myself just to achieve this because it's like, I finally did this. So with that, I'm actually going to circle around.
Hi, my name is Brooks King. I am an Eagle Scout from Troop 624. I live on 4117 83rd Avenue Southeast. And my Eagle Scout project, I actually finished it, yeah, about the summer of my soph, between my freshman and sophomore year. What I did was I did a kind of a door-to-door donation thing and a gathering of supplies for a new charity called Survive the Night. And it's, they give supplies for foster kids for just one night because usually that's when foster kids, you know, they usually go into foster care for one night. And what this taught me is, you know, how to really prepare for things that are thrown at you in life, like how to put things together and lead other boys. And, you know, I think it's one of the greatest experiences I've ever had in my entire life to be able to do this project and gain all this experience and knowledge from it. And I'm glad to be up here in front of you guys today.
Congratulations.
Hello, my name is Eric Hardwick. I live at 8720 Southeast 45th Street. And for my Eagle project, I actually went in and refurbished the wooded area between the old recycling center and the skate park. And then I pressure washed a lot of the, all the driveway area of the recycling center and, well, I didn't do it. I had a good group of people who I had to, you know, collect up and gather friends and associates and acquaintances. But, um, yeah, we went in and we removed a whole ton of invasive plants. We cleared the area, made it look nice and pretty, and we barked the whole trail and a bunch of the, you know, surrounding areas that we cleared to keep the plants down. And I think it was actually a, quite an eye-opening experience at just how much logistical planning it takes to put, you know, something as seemingly simple as this into action. And I'm sure you all know this.
Welcome to public process.
And, uh, I don't know, I just, it was a really great experience and I think we turned, I think it turned out pretty well. So if any of you guys want to take a look and walk down to the old trail, it looks nice. I think it, I think it's still good. So, uh, yeah.
Great, thanks.
Hi, my name is Eric Yes and I live on 7810 7th Avenue. And for my Eagle project, I built a trellis to the learning gardens at Laker Elementary. And I learned two things. One was diligence because I had to go through over 10 drafts before they actually accepted mine so I could go ahead with my Eagle project. And also I learned to kind of roll with it because I had planned an hour to dig the holes for the posts to put the trellis on. And it took about three hours to dig because the ground was really, really hard.
Welcome to Mercer Island.
My name is Andrew Hagedt. I'm an Eagle Scout from Troop 647. I live on 3037 69th Avenue Southeast. And for my Eagle project, I built a pair of picnic tables for the Island Park Elementary School who needed them for their outdoor learning garden. And doing this project, it was a great, like a great honor, I felt, able to do this, but also it taught me a lot about managing people because I had to manage all the workers.
Hi, I'm Stephen Leach from Boy Scout Troop 457. And my Eagle project was to remove a large amount of Himalayan blackberry from Island Crest Park. And it taught me a lot about leadership.
Great. Thank you.
Hi, I am Jeffrey Leach and I am also with Troop 457. And for my project at the same park, Island Crest Trail Park, I finished a trail that was recently cut and it was over the summer and it taught me a lot about leadership and making sure that you get the job done and making sure that you have people to work for you because if you do it all yourself, it's never going to get done.
Hi, my name is Ian Monroe from Troop 457. I, my Eagle Scout project was an outdoor class from Mercer Island High School and it wasn't really used for the past 30 years. So we fixed it up and is now currently in use and has been actually redone by the school district to expand my current project to promote 60 kids for block classes. And I learned that sometimes you have more parents than kids show up and parents work harder than kids.
I'm Brooks Hamilton. I live at 7130 78th Avenue Southeast and I'm from Troop 647. And for my project, I constructed the outdoor learning table at Laker Elementary School for their outdoor classroom. So, yep.
So just to summarize, before I have them come up and talk to you all, is these scouts donated over 1,224 hours. At $20 an hour, that's almost $25,000 they saved your community that they did this year alone. So I'd like you guys, as you're doing your funding and stuff like that, to realize that these guys do make a dramatic impact on your community and you should be very proud of them.
Do they get paid $20 an hour?
Actually, a lot of those adults that Ian was talking about probably get more than $20 an hour. But please keep that in mind and as you guys are identifying projects and things like that, that maybe we can call on the local community to do some volunteer, some of your projects. And we have Kenna Birch, I'm sorry, yeah, Kenna Birch here. She's our district executive who's here tonight. She's going to be coordinating a lot of these things. So please keep them in mind and all of us and we'll hopefully get a few more projects. So thanks again, guys. Go on, you head on up.
And on behalf of the city, once again, thank you very much for all your service and it's a great thing to lead by example. And the parents in the room, can I see the parents? Okay, parents, guys, when I got through my Eagle Scout, I said, "Boy, this is great. I did it by myself" and someone says, "No, you didn't." Your parents helped a lot. So anyway, parents, you're part of this success story and well done and we appreciate you from the island's perspective for being great parents and raising such great kids. So with that, why don't you come on up? I know the council wants to shake your hands and I've got a city lapel pin for your sash.
There you go. Sounds great. Thank you.
Here you go. There you go. You bet. Congratulations. Here you go. There's a city lapel pin. Yeah, there you go. On the sash there. There you go. Congratulations. There you go. Congratulations. That's it? Congrats. Great. There you go. Congratulations. Yeah, there you go. Congratulations. And I'll let you figure them out. Great, thanks so much. That was great.
You're welcome.
Okay, and what we can do is if you'd like, we give you a moment if you want to excuse yourself or if you want to stick around, that's great too. See, I can see, there you go. You can, you can watch us on TV, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
That is huge. Okay, with that, we're going to get back on to regular business. This is the time we have appearances. If anyone would like to address the city council, please come forward. Give your name and address and you have three minutes. And if you see the lights on there, please be respectful. They will go three minutes. It'll be a yellow light after two and a half and then the red light at three minutes. Please.
Hi, my name is Edie Phillips, Mercer Island resident, 7373 Mercer Terrace Drive. I just wanted to thank the city as a Mercer Island Farmers Market Manager for the last four seasons and the planning season prior to that. So I've been working with the Farmers Market for five years. And I did make the announcement to the board and I wanted to make the announcement to you in person as well as to the community that I have made the decision to pass it on to a new person for the next season. So we're currently going to be looking for, the board is going to be looking for a new market manager. But I really wanted to thank the city and everybody for the incredible support that has, you know, made our, my job so much easier and just to ensure that the market day operations ran so smoothly. Kirsten Taylor, Bill Sandsbury, James Mason, everybody at the city has just been so incredibly supportive and we could not have done it without you. So the partnership was just really, really impressive and I just can't thank you enough. So it was just a phenomenal experience for me. I have, I think the biggest benefit, and I've always said this and I, you know, leave saying this, is that I really feel like the best, biggest benefit was getting to meet some of the most incredible people that live on the island, which I never would have connected with otherwise. So we have a board of a dozen very talented and very energetic people that have brought to the market to create and make it what it is today. And I'm really proud to have been a part of that and just wanted to thank you for, again, for your support. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's been great. I, you know, it's one of those, I just want to compliment you. I was there, I saw a couple of us there this weekend.
Just yesterday.
Yeah, yesterday. Wow, I'm getting old.
I know.
Was it yesterday?
Me too.
And, uh, it was great. The weather held out and people were buying stuff and it was well done.
Yeah.
And what I think is so nice about it is it really has a little bit of a heart of our community and it's a place for people to meet and talk as well as buy things.
Yeah. One thing that struck me yesterday, we had some new vendors and whenever we do have some new vendors, they come from all over the state and, you know, the cities. And one thing that I hear over and over from vendors is we do all these different markets. We go to all these different neighborhoods. The volunteers that we have are really unique. We have a really strong volunteer community. And the customers here, people from all over are saying, "These customers, everybody's just so fantastic, so supportive." So I think that, I think the Farmers Market is really helping Mercer Island just to have that kind of really great community reputation and, you know, just, I think it's just been a really good all-around community event. So thank you again for your support.
And thank you for all your energy.
It's been wonderful.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Bye. And Joel?
Hi, good evening. My name is Joel Wachs. My address is 7635 Southeast 29th Street. I'm president of the Mercer Island Farmers Market and I come before you tonight on behalf of the Mercer Island Farmers Market Board. I wanted to present a quick summary of this past season and also acknowledge some of the folks who made it happen. We had a 17-week season. Our customer count during this period was nearly 60,000. So we averaged nearly 3,500 people per market day. Our total sales was approximately 400,000, which is up 7.5% from last year. And our grooming program collected over 2,300 pounds of food, fresh produce from our farms. And this in turn was donated to the Mercer Island Youth and Family Services Food Bank and St. Monica's Church. Like any good organization, we tried several new things this past year, which included we added an hour in the morning, 10 to 11. So we had a five-hour shopping day. We developed new partnerships with the Mercer Island Chamber of Commerce, which had a booth at the market, and a coupon program with Mercer Island Youth and Family Services that in fact was sponsored by Mercer Island Women's Club. In addition to that, I wanted to end up talking about the poster contest that Edie ended up developing, which was won by an eighth grader here on the island, Maeve O'Brien. And we're hoping that many of these innovations will continue into the future. Wanted to thank the volunteers, the National Charity League, Voice, high school sports teams, the National Honor Society students and also seniors here on Mercer Island for helping on Market Day. Judy Whitmer for week after week putting together the children's table. Donors, which included citizens here on the island as well as the Mercer Island Community Fund, the Mercer Island Women's Club, Joy House and Lilies. The city staff, Edie's already mentioned several of the folks that were so instrumental. I also want to acknowledge Rich Conrad's help. And all of you on the council, I've spoken to each one of you about support for the market and various issues that have come up and I really appreciate all of that. Last but certainly not least, I wanted to acknowledge Edie. She's indicated she's stepping down after five years of working on the Farmers Market, one year organizing and four years of our initial four seasons. Our community, I think, really owes a large debt of gratitude to her. The market in so many ways reflects her passion, her drive and her vision and it is stronger for all of her hard work. Thank you, Edie, and thank you to all of you.
All right. Thank you.
And I would just say, Joel, thank you for all the hard work you do and to the others, if you waved your hands, including my wife up there, who are major instrumental folks in the market. Thank you very much for what you do. And Edie, you'll be missed. I'm sure we'll still see you at the market. So, yeah, keep up the good work. It really is, to my mind, a wonderful community asset. And the fact that it's gone four years now, you're starting to feel like, I'm starting to feel like this is something that's really got legs going forward and that's exciting to, exciting to see it taking that, that stable point in our community.
Thank you. Great. Thanks.
Ira Abelman, 6213 83rd Place Southeast. I objected to the continuing cover-up of the Lindell and Eggers scandals. In this latest phase, another up to $15,000 has been wasted by the city council majority on a phony report that has nothing to do with the Lindell scandal but has everything to do with the continuing cover-up. The $15,000 is added to the $1.2 million paid to Lindell, $137,000 paid to former city attorney Sterbank, $90,000 paid to former city clerk Eggers, and hundreds of thousands of dollars in staff time, outside attorneys and other activities in support of the continuing cover-up. The proximal cause of the latest phase of the cover-up is the settlement of the meritless Lindell lawsuit for $1.2 million, the largest settlement I'm aware of in Mercer Island history. The Regner report, which was discussed in the study session, is intended to reassure islanders that despite the huge settlement, there's nothing wrong at the city. Inexplicably, the audit team has accepted a prohibition of considering the Lindell scandal and receiving any information whatsoever about what has happened at the city in the past. Quote, "Our charge did not include any direction to review any past personnel actions or individual employees," unquote. However, as the helpful person that I am, a month ago, I supplied the audit team with the Stephson report on Conrad soliciting sex from city clerk Eggers in her filing of a sexual harassment complaint, the Merkel memo disciplining Conrad in the Eggers matter, the city attorney Sterbank memo warning Conrad of illegal behavior related to the Siegel discipline, and the Marcello report warning about illegal retaliation against Lindell and others. I emailed the materials to Regner and Whitfield and Regner also received a hard copy on October 17th, so they cannot claim complete ignorance. Past problems have resulted from failure to follow policies like the nepotism policy, not from shortcomings in the policies themselves. City manager Conrad should have been fired in 2003 when the council learned he had solicited sex from the city clerk. The Lindell mess is also Conrad's responsibility. RCW 35A 13120 prohibits the city council from interfering in the day-to-day administration by the city manager. But the corollary is that the city manager should be held completely responsible for the day-to-day mess. The city council should stop enabling bad behavior by the city manager by covering it up, but should rather release all records concerning the Lindell and Eggers scandals and hold the city manager responsible.
Would anyone else like to address the city council? Please.
Hi, good evening. I'm Tamara Smilinich from Seattle, Washington, and I came here a couple of months ago and this is about our water quality. Not only the water quality of the city of Seattle, but Mercer Island gets the water from the city of Seattle. And I was pleased to see that the Mercer Island Reporter from November 16, 2011, actually had a little letter to the editor posted of Mercer Island needs a separate water supply. And it goes on to explain that in late August, the Washington Action for Safe Water organization that has been coming to city council here in Mercer Island and of course, attending other city councils around the state, they would really like to see, and I would really like to see some, some movement. I'm sure many of you have already considered the opposition as to the fluoride in the water and what's that about? And hopefully there's been some independent research you've done on your own. But there was one suggestion in this letter to the editor and that was the water we get, city of Seattle, that comes over this way is from the Tolton Cedar River watershed. And just if there could be some sort of convincing that you all could do to the city of Seattle, having at least one pipeline come off one of those watersheds that does not have fluoridated water. And that way, the city of Mercer Island would be doing its job by going along with what the people have not voted for and they did not vote for fluoride in the water. So please consider that. I also just found out recently that Spanaway Water, whatever the water district down there in Spanaway is called, but that's right near Tacoma, they don't fluoridate their water. I called their water district to confirm that just last week. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Marty Gale, 9404 Southeast 54th Street. I understand that tonight after the regular council meeting, the council will meet in an executive session for the city manager's performance evaluation. I would like to remind the council of what the actions by the city manager have cost in dollars. Performance should be measurable and converting actions into dollars is a good way to do it. First, there is the $1 million for the Lindell settlement whose costs are borne by our insurance carrier, the Washington City's Insurance Authority. We are actually paying for this settlement with our premiums. By the way, the cost of the attorneys for the city, Michael and Alexander, was, were close to $1 million itself, which the Washington City's Insurance Authority also paid and we pay with our premiums. Second, a judgment was issued against the city for $185,000 for the Public Records Act violation, fine and attorney's costs for the plaintiff. This was not paid for by the Washington City's Insurance Authority but by the city itself. Third, the city lost a deputy city manager, a city attorney and a parks manager as a result of the Conrad Siegel crisis in City Hall, which led to the Lindell lawsuit. The cost of hiring a new, a search firm for a new deputy city manager was a direct result of that crisis and was paid for by the city. Fourth, there is the cost of the city clerk's time for the thousands of pages of Public Records Act requests on behalf of the Lindell lawsuit. Fifth, there is the cost of the city attorney's time whose job was greatly impacted by the legal coordination between the city and the law firm for the city's defense in the Lindell law firm, lawsuit. Sixth, the cost of city staff sitting in the courtroom for hours as a support for city manager, Sidney Goodwin, Chris Siegel, et cetera, sitting and sometimes reading a book or looking at their phones. Seventh, there is the cost to citizens who were subpoenaed. Although the city did not pay for these costs, the city manager's actions did cause these costs. My point is that this city manager by his actions has caused all of this. He has cost dollars that could have been used for the betterment of our community. And of all those costs, the city manager himself did not pay $1. How many companies could afford to let its chief executive lose millions of dollars and continue to reward him with salary increases and perks or even his job? When you do your evaluation tonight, I urge you to consider the dollar cost of this city manager's performance. This evaluation will be used later on to do his compensation review. We cannot afford to have this city manager. The recent council election in which a city council member named in the Lindell lawsuit lost 60 to 40%, showing that the citizens are very aware of the mismanagement that has occurred and use their displeasure as a reason to vote out that council member. You as city council members have to consider the public's trust when you go to the voters for funding future projects. Trust is everything. It's up to you to start restoring it. So thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the city council?
Hello, I'm Dr. David John. I live at 8817 Southeast 61st Street. I wanted to talk to you tonight about fluoridation as a dangerous precedent. You know, if you put fluoride in the public water and the government's mandate that, then you establish a legal precedent. You establish the precedent that governments can force the population to take the drugs that the government puts in the water. And you might say to yourself, "Well, so what?" But if you look a little bit and you look at lithium, for instance, you go to the Huffington Post around August 2nd, 2010, a video and also a written link, also at a group or agency called Big Think, and also... called Big Think, and also, it calls for lithium to be added to the public water throughout the country. I don't know how many of you knew that. ABC News article around the same time, bioethicist and media historian Jacob M. Appel. In the New York Times, he says that we should, we need to put lithium in the water because he believes it will decrease suicides. So, you see, you start with fluoride, the next thing you know, people are talking about adding lithium to all the water. If you Google the term, I mean, you might think it's just a little offhand thing that I'm bringing up, and there's no point to it. But if you Google the term lithium in the water supply, if you take that little quote, lithium in the water supply, I just did it before I came down here, you get 2,040,000 results instantly. Now, you could say, well, maybe there are no other drugs people think they ought to put in the water supply. But there are statin drugs, and I don't know if you guys know about that. It's recently been suggested from many different sources that the government should mandate the putting of statin drugs in all the water supply. This is supposedly going to prevent all kinds of heart attacks. Crestor, the antistatin drug from a drug company called AstraZeneca, a very wealthy, powerful company, lot of influence in the government and in different agencies, so on, the AMA, I'm sure, big contributions and so on, they've been mentioned, you know, maybe, maybe they should use Crestor. Be quite a bonanza for that company, wouldn't it? Anyway, if you Google the term statins in the water supply, as I just did before I came here, you'll find 91,800 results. What drug do you think it will be next? Ironically, it's all based on the idea that it's supposed to, fluoride was such a great success, and it turns out that EPA scientists at the top and the big union leaders and so on have said, it's the greatest fraud that's ever been carried out in this century, if not forever. It's a fraud.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm James Robert Deal. I'm the president of Fluoride Class Action and the vice president of WashingtonSafeWater.com. Those are both on the internet, and I urge you to take a look at it. There are various positions on this fluoridation question. There are those who say it's wonderful, drink as much fluoridated water as you can, put it in the toothpaste, spray it on the vegetables. Then there are those who say you don't need any fluoride at all, it's not an essential for human nutrition at all, you have perfectly wonderful teeth without it, just eat a lot of calcium. Then there are people in the middle who say, you know, fluoride is good in small amounts, strengthens the teeth. There are some dentists who come out with that position. They say it's topical. It works topically. And in fact, there's a drug. It's called, it's not, it rhymes with fluoride, it's luride, and it's approved by the FDA, and it has instructions, and it's .7 milligrams in a little bitty pill, and it says, you may take this if prescribed by a doctor. And also, there's the advice on the label that's, you have to, the doctor has to say this, do you live and drink in a city where you drink fluoridated water? If you do, don't take luride. So with luride, you have to get a prescription. It contains exactly the same amount of fluoride that you're putting in the water. But with fluoride in the water, you have no prescription, and you can drink as much as you want. So, there are various reasons for looking at it and saying, putting it in the water, even if fluoride has a place, makes no sense, because the diabetics drank 10 times as much water as everybody else, because people with kidney problems really must avoid as much fluoride as possible, because it weakens the kidney, builds up there, it just starts the downward spiral. And then it's the type of fluoride that we're using. It's not the original stuff that we started with, which was sodium fluoride, which is relatively clean. It's actually what they put in the toothpaste. There, they, they ran out of it. They were so successful, they ran out of it, so they started, went to the fertilizer companies and got their silica fluoride, which has, comes out of phosphate rock, and phosphate rock has got uranium in it, it's got lead in it, it's got arsenic in it. So, when you look at the, the stuff I'm going to leave you, you can see where it says on the report, here's some arsenic in here and there's some lead in here. And also, there are other ways to get it. You can get a prescription for luride, or you can swallow some of your toothpaste, then it's, and also, another reason why not to put it in the water is because if it's in the water, it's everywhere. It's in all the food, it's in the beer, it's in the Coca-Cola, if you have a bottling plant here, it's in your bread, and you go to the restaurant, it's there. Your body has a lifetime allotment of the fluoride it can handle. Whenever we eat it, we put it in our bones, and we can store a certain amount of it, but at a certain time, you get too much. Think for yourselves. Don't let anybody, even me, do your thinking for you, and I'll leave behind some, some written materials. Any questions?
Thank you. You leave with the city clerk.
Thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to address the city council? Okay, seeing none, we'll close appearances, we'll move on to our minutes. We have the regular minutes of November 7. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consent calendar. We have the payables and the payroll. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded.
Mr. Mayor, a question for Rich on the payables, please. So, Rich, I see another purchase of a vehicle, a Columbia Ford, for $38,933. Can you tell me what that's for? What kind of car it is?
I couldn't tell you right now. I can check it out and get back to you.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, on to regular business. We have Agenda Bill 4685, and this would be the ambulance fee, and I believe Chief Tubbs is on.
Good evening, Mayor Herrmann, Deputy Mayor Jenke, Council. For the record, Chris Tubbs, Fire Chief. Before I go into an overview of the Agenda Bill, I just want to draw your attention to a typo on page two. That's the last sentence in the last paragraph. It should read December 31, 2012, not 2011, and I apologize that we didn't catch that before that was distributed to you. So just to review, council authorized staff to initiate a fee for transport program beginning March 18 of this year with a sunset of March 17, 2012. Staff originally projected 700 transports within that one-year period and a projected revenue of $330,000. You may recall that council expressed some concerns regarding the impacts of this type of program and directed staff to report on a set of metrics designed to assess the original hypothesis, which is also in the Agenda Bill, but I'll read it again, excuse me. The Mercer Island Fire Department will maintain and/or improve patient care while simultaneously collecting revenue from the transport of medical patients. We've now compiled six months of data, which is included in the report attached to the Agenda Bill, and we believe a number of conclusions can be drawn from the data. Our revenue experience, though very good, has not fully met our original projection, and we now know why. This is detailed in the attached report, but there are three primary drivers. One was that it is projected that we are not going to hit the 700 transports, we're going to do 600. The insurance payer mix, which is the percentage that each of the different carriers will pay, and again, that is detailed in the report for you. And finally, the mileage and deductible and copay costs. In the program that council adopted, we do not collect mileage fees or copays and deductibles. The report also details our findings on the four metrics that were designed to test the original hypothesis. I believe that our data and experience to date support the hypothesis. Ensured to believe the program generates substantial revenue with minimal impacts to our normal routine and emergency responses. These impacts are absorbed internally, utilizing existing resources and systems with little to no impact to our citizens and community. As a matter of fact, our normal daily emergency responses have a greater impact on our unavailable time than the transport program. It's my conclusion that the program has been successful to date, and as your Fire Chief, I'm comfortable with supporting the program moving forward. Clearly, we would continue to monitor the impacts of the program and make any necessary adjustments. And with that, I will open it up for questions.
Great. Thank you. Questions? Mike?
Chief, I appreciate the work you've put in to present this. Can you speak a little bit more to the non-collection of deductibles, copays, and mileage? And particularly, how much additional staff time you had to put in on that particular item?
In regards to collecting that information?
No, in terms of collecting the money. So you've got a number of non-collectibles, you've got some copay and other issues. Sounds like that created more work for your staff.
Not for our staff, but for the billing company. The billing is all handled by the contracted agency systems billing, system design, excuse me.
So, the time and costs associated with that, did that also eat into the overall revenue that you anticipated?
Mike, I think there may be, let's see if there's a disconnect here. We don't collect any of those. We don't charge it. So there is no effort to, to do the work. It's the difference between us and AMR.
I, I, I completely understand that. Yeah, but my question is, so the contract we have with the firm to, to collect, if they're spending more time on non-collectibles, do we then get billed for that staff time?
No, it's a flat rate per call.
Thank you.
Questions?
Are you proposing, are you proposing then that we add the additional fee, the mileage fee, even though the, the original fact sheet assumed the assumption that we would not do the mileage fee?
Not in-
Is that what you're assuming or implying?
Not in my Agenda Bill. Was, the intent in my Agenda Bill was to bring forward what those differences were. In other words, we want to identify why we didn't achieve our original projected revenue.
But the original projected revenue assumed that we would use a flat fee and that we would not use a mileage fee?
That's correct, but part of our projection was based on the information that AMR provided to us with their experience on Mercer Island. What we subsequently found was that they rolled those costs into those estimates, and we weren't made aware of that. And so, later on, as we began to dig into this, we're able to contact AMR and sort of dig even deeper, we found that those costs were indeed rolled in. So that was part of the difference.
Just to clarify that, Mike, at the Public Safety Committee meeting, the last Public Safety Committee meeting, which you weren't able to get to, we had asked the chief to, to at least advise the council what the incremental revenue would be from the mileage fee, because again, that's just paid by the insurance company, it's not paid by the, by the person who's transported, and it's, it's part of the insurance reimbursement that, at this point, we're not trying to take advantage of, but it's something that there's an opportunity potentially to increase the amount of revenue that's collected.
Yeah, we didn't come here to recommend we do that, but it is clear that we want to get the information to you, and if you chose to go that route, we could do that.
Can, one other question. I, I'm a little bit confused on one thing, Chief, the, why we would look to extend the trial period. The trial period, by definition, is a period that we were going to do an evaluation, and I mean, is there a belief on part of staff that we haven't completed the evaluation yet, or you're doing that because you feel the council will want to do that?
No, we felt after six months of collecting data and doing the analysis that we didn't expect a significant change for the remaining six months. And so, we were comfortable with recommending to council, if they wanted to consider extending it through the balance of 2012, that we didn't see anything in the data that would suggest that that would not be a good idea.
But, I mean, from your standpoint, is, I'm sorry, ma'am, I'm not saying this right. Is it staff's recommendation that we have an extended trial period, or is it staff's recommendation that this has been successful and we should now just have it like any other city program that we're running and continues on unless and until this council or a future council decides to, to end it? I mean, it, because a trial period, by definition, means that we're going to have you come back here in another year or so and, and talk to us again about this, but if we don't have a trial period, then that's the end of it unless and until council, you know, brings us back up again.
Sure. I think, I think the, the recommendation that we're making is that essentially, we feel as though the six months has been a successful trial period, and that we would be comfortable in extending it through the end of 2012. If council wanted to review that program as part of the 2013-2014 budget process, they could address that and make a different decision at that time as well.
Maybe another way of saying the same thing is, we're assuming these dollars through the end of the biennium, and we think, we would urge you to continue this through the biennium, and I think it's probably safe to assume that it would be in our recommendations for the next biennium as well.
Well, and am I not understanding, the, the program is scheduled to sunset in March of 2012.
That's correct.
So we need to take a vote then.
If, you can direct us to come back with, I don't know, what, some sort of an action chip to, to continue on in 2012, and we would do that first week of January or early next year?
Actually, I've included a motion in my Agenda Bill-
That would do the same thing, right.
To tell us, come back to the council with amended ordinance.
If you do nothing, this will continue on until March. The problem is, if, if you do that, and then we're left in limbo at the end of March, then we have sort of this one quarter of a, four-quarter year funded, and the other three quarters not funded, and it gets kind of difficult for us to figure out how to do the budget for the rest of the year.
Well, no, it doesn't. The assumption is that it sunsets when we set it with sunset. So you budget so the revenue goes until March 12.
That's correct. We just have to make some other adjustments for the revenue that we have not-
That's what we expect the staff to do.
Right.
Chief, if, if we were to shift this from a trial period to business as usual, let me preface the question by saying, we, as a council, I think we're very concerned that we wanted to make sure, and you've reflected that here, that this didn't cause problems with our response time. And so, I'm assuming that you've gone to some lengths beyond what you normally would go to, to, to keep data, crunch data, and give us those results. If we shift now from a trial period to business as usual, does that make your burden of data collection easier, and does, and on the, on the flip side of that, does it give you a nervousness that you lose a visibility into something that you, you know, you think is going in the right direction, but you're not quite sure of yet?
No. We constantly monitor that data relative to our tie, our availability to respond to calls. I mean, that's our primary mission. As I also mentioned in the report, the, the bulk of our daily responses provides opportunities for unavailable time to respond to subsequent emergencies. So that's just part of our, our normal business routine. The fact that we've now added a transportation program into that, it's just part of the regular analysis that we do. And it's not just within our community, because of the relationship we have with other cities and this seamless response, that sort of analysis is going on all the time, not only for our ability to respond in our own community, but because of the sharing of resources, ensuring that those balances are maintained.
Thank you.
Chip, which ordinance, which resolution is it that you've got this thing in?
I didn't see it. It's a motion.
It's not a resolution, it's a motion. Is that attached to your Agenda Bill? Yeah, number 10. Number 10.
Isn't that, okay.
On page 10. I'm sorry, on page 10? Page 10. The 10th, the last motion.
Maybe I can ask Chief Tubbs a question while we're looking. I just wanted to ask you, how have the firefighters responded to the program, and have there been any firefighters who've just not liked it and not chosen to transport it?
Originally, when council was considering adopting the program, council may remember that the union president and the union's official position was in opposition to the implementation of the program. Since that time, and additionally, I would add that there was some concern on council's part, once council had adopted and implemented the program, how would the firefighters respond to the deployment of the program? Would they support it, or would they try to undermine it? What we have found is that, once the decision was made by council, as I fully expected, the firefighters got on, on the bus, so to speak, and off they went. One of the instructions that I provided to my staff was, I understand that you disagree with this program, but if it's going to fail, let it fail on its own merits, not because you chose to undermine the program, which is a very important ethic in our organization. What I've found- What I've found is that not only did they get on the bus, but a lot of the people who've been engaged in this program have actually come to find a lot of merit that they didn't think they would find in it. And the vast majority of folks that I've interacted with in the organization like the program, and part of the reason of that is the continuity of care. And so in the past, when we would have a private ambulance company transport that patient, there was sort of a loss of that continuity of care. So they had established a relationship with the patient, only to then transfer that to a private company, not see that patient all the way to the hospital. So we've had a lot of very, very positive feedback from our staff on that.
And have there been some firefighters who've just not cooperated or not wanted to transport?
Not at all. We've found that even some of our biggest naysayers, again, have seen this as direction by the council. The council is our employer, our boss, and when they say, "This is what we're going to do, this is what we're going to do." And again, with that, sort of that underlying theme, if the program is going to fail, let it fail on its own merits, not because of your action or inaction.
Thank you. Well, and I'm amazed, it's obviously an improvement for patient care when the amount of time you, in less than the amount of time that it would take the ambulance to arrive while you're waiting, Mercer Island firefighters would have you at the hospital in less time. So that's amazing.
Correct. Thank you.
Yes.
Chief, any unintended consequences with reference to training, time available for training, or time available for maintenance, those things that your firefighters do when they're not on an active call?
No.
And you don't anticipate that in the future?
Do not.
Great, thank you. Chief, what are the things that you or staff don't like?
Probably the controversy.
No, seriously. I didn't have my glasses on, so you got to poke them both out. Would you focus on the substance of, you know, the program in terms of, you know, because I'm sure there are things you don't like.
I think, at the end of the day, for firefighters especially, ideally eliminating risk is the most comfortable position for all of us to be in. We recognize that that is just financially impossible for us to do. Even if we spent all the money in the world on the fire department, there would still be risk. So this idea of how you go about managing risk is probably the biggest struggle, and certainly one of the largest topics of conversation in our organization, is how are decisions around risk management made, and what is quote-unquote "the right decision"? And we all know that that is really a policy-level decision.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other questions? I think, this is just a report, so there's no formal action. So with that, thank you very much, Chief, and tell the team thank you very much. With that, we're going to move on then to the next agenda bill, and Chip, you're on deck. This is going to be Agenda Bill 4683, the public hearing on the mid-biennial review. Do you want me to open up the public hearing before or after you do it, see if anyone wants to comment?
Sure.
Okay, why don't I just open it up now? You know, open the public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to comment? Please come forward.
Kendall.
Okay. Seeing that no one would like to make a comment, we'll close the public hearing. Chip, yours.
Okay. You had your big chance, Kendall. Good evening for the record, Chip Carter, your finance director. Perfect. Tonight, we do this once every two years, this is our mid-biennial budget review. What's that?
That was a stat.
It's a stat. All of the above.
Blood pressure.
Anyways, tonight, we'll focus on the third quarter financial status report. I'll zip us through that. That's focusing mostly on the general fund, also looks at REIT, and we'll talk about some budget adjustments. And then we have a series of budget follow-up items, some of them from the council, some of them from staff, such as council member Ciro, as I recall, asked me to bring back a projected current market value of our First Hill Water Utility property, so I've done that. Wanted to alert the council on the impact of the state's budget deficit on our budget next year. BLS ambulance transport fee, kind of a connect the dots from what Chief Tubbs said and what the financial impact of that is on the 2012 city budget. Development fee surcharge, we'll chat about that and what that is. There were some comments and questions about bank capacity last time, so I'm just bringing this forward, simply as for your information about how much bank capacity we have, what that amounts to, what the impact on a typical household is. And then finally, one of the to-dos the council gave me at our last meeting was, what's the annual funding requirement to fully pay for our left one retiree costs? The pension benefits, the medical care, the long-term care costs. So I've done that little model, and we'll report that to the council tonight. And then finally, in terms of resolutions, ordinances, it's all the standard stuff with one addition. There's the budget amendments that are part of the financial status report, the development fee surcharge, the NORCOM budget allocation, just recognizing our piece of the NORCOM budget, we do this annually, the utility rates, and then finally, the property tax levy, our favorite. Mayor, guide me. I'll zip through the financial status report here, as we get to the budget issues, and should we let the council kind of deliberate on each issue as I go through it, or wait till the very end? Because there's 10 motions at the end here.
What would you guys like to do, guys generically?
You're out of control if you want to do these individually.
You know, I'm thinking is, you know, I would think that it would be probably good just to do one at a time, just get them through. I mean, that's my first thought. What do you guys, does that work?
I was thinking.
What do you think?
I'll do a little brief presentation, one or two slides, and then you deliberate on that.
Yeah.
And so then, the end of each one would be a motion and a vote on that item? That's what we're suggesting, I think. I just want to make it clear.
It could, or at least it makes them, at the very end, if you save all 10 motions, you've effectively decided, and you just zip through them that much faster at the end. So you can do it either way.
I think, instead of doing that, we'll just do the votes all at the end. Would that work for everyone, so that we get through them if there's any issues, and then we can just do it all at once at the end? Or do you want to have a vote?
You said that we would vote on each one after.
I didn't say vote, but we can do it. I said deliberation of each one. But we can finish it and vote on each one as we go.
The only thing that's, issue might be, depending on what we decide on the property tax rate, as I understand it, you might have to go off and do some numbers and change your resolution and come back later tonight to...
I have one in my hip pocket. I'm prepared to dance if the council needs me to dance.
The answer is yes. In five minutes, we'll come back with a new modified one.
So what works then? Do you want to, I'm asking advice in the council, do you want to do motions after each one, or just deliberate and then wait to do them all at once, just one, two, three?
There's really three issues. There's utilities, there's the taxes, and there's the budget adjustments. The budget adjustments, there's only one item in there, which is a new item, which we haven't already approved before. So that's a simple one, and then the utilities, I mean, unless...
Already had the utilities here and given us direction to bring this back.
I mean, my, it's up to you, Jim, but I would suggest we do the taxes as early on as we can, so we're all still fresh for that discussion and not beat ourselves up on a lot of other stuff that we could waste a lot of time on, but is probably of less consequence than the tax discussion.
My only comment?
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
And my only comment would be, I think, I guess I would be inclined to say, let's go right on into the motion and the vote and get them done, so they're really done, rather than leaving them hanging with some ambiguity, and then we've got to come back and we reopen them and start to...
Okay, all right. Let's do it that way then. Okay, we're going to do one and vote, and go the next, to the next, next, okay?
Just for housekeeping, Mr. Mayor, I'll do the first motion. Then finish the presentation, right?
Well, let me do the presentation, then we'll open it up for your actions, okay?
Presentation, questions, motion.
Buckle your seatbelts. General fund overview, real quickly. Things have changed since the first half. We reported back to the council in September. When you compare in the general fund, total revenues to total expenditures, we are to the good $124,000. That's good news. Lots of folks aren't experiencing that. The bad news there is, is back in September, when I was looking at the first half of the year, we were about almost $600,000 to the good. So it swung in the third quarter by quite some, you know, by quite a stretch, but we're at least, we're hanging in there. And the good news is, in the rainy day fund, we had budgeted $170,000 as the budgeted draw of that fund. I still think we can get through this year without tapping it. Total revenues through the third quarter of the year, so we're effectively right on target. Third quarter representing 75% of the year, we're right there. When you compare actual, for the first third quarter of last year to the third quarter of this year, we're up 3.3%, or almost $550,000. Why? It's kind of all over the board. Property tax, meaning new construction additions and property tax, and the collection rate is better this year than it was last year. Sales tax is up a little bit, again, actual to actual, utility tax, development fees, rec program fees, and of course, the institution of the BLS ambulance transport fee. Total expenditures, we're a little bit below the budget threshold, that's all about our payroll periods. We have 26 bi-weekly payroll periods. Through the third quarter, we have 19. That equals 73% of the budget, so that's what's causing that slight shortage. Development activity, mostly good news, while the number of permits is down a little bit, 5.6%, total valuation is up almost 17%. Thank you, Aviara Project. Let's talk about the revenue projection for this year and next year in the general fund. Here are my key assumptions. The state's budget deficit, which we'll talk about a little bit later, what the governor's proposing, or was proposing before the election, is let's take all the liquor revenues, consists of liquor excise taxes and liquor profits that are distributed to cities and counties and have been since the 1930s, and let's keep those for the state. Well, the passage of Initiative 1183, excuse me, has thrown, has complicated that whole thing. The bottom line is, she has set a revenue target for all local governments in terms of what she wants to extract from them by reducing state shared revenues with cities. Okay? And so I'm going with those revenue targets. So for next year, it'd have a half-year impact, about $142,000. Thereafter, the full year impact is 283 a year in the general fund. So I factor that in. Yes, sir?
Sorry, I wasn't clear on that.
The 1183 liquor revenue that we get, are you concluding we're going to have less monies from there, or more?
What I'm concluding is, regardless of whether it's liquor revenues or something else, she's going to, let's say, with the passage of 1183, her ability to take all that revenue is actually greatly constrained. She needs a couple of two-thirds majority votes from legislature, which is, well, highly unlikely, right? So we would probably get some liquor revenue, but that just means she will go after other state revenues and reduce those that the city receives.
So what are those?
See, we have criminal justice sales tax, we have, what else am I forgetting?
Bull registration, now that addresses $180,000.
We don't have much anymore.
We don't have a lot.
We're pretty independent now, the county and the state. I'm not so sure about the liquor taxes. It really will all depend on the legislature and how much pressure the legislature receives from cities and counties.
Well, is that a fact, though, that having, initiative having just passed, can the legislature, without a two-thirds majority vote in both houses, change that?
The two-thirds...
That's what Chip is suggesting.
The two-thirds threshold, that's actually new.
It implies the certain parts of it, other parts is the simple majority.
Parts of what?
It's complicated, of the liquor revenues, the components of it where, because the initiative, remember, it had, I don't want to go into the initiative, it's unnecessary. There are aspects or components of the liquor revenues that are subject to a simple majority or two-thirds majority, and it's, this is from AWC, Association of Washington Cities.
When this was first announced out of the governor's office, within that week, there was a, we had a big meeting in our monthly city managers group here at Mercer Island, and the, a representative of the governor's office was at the meeting and did not dispute the statement coming out of AWC that it appeared that the governor's recommendation was to, in 2012, because it would be implemented mid-year, to take those revenues, about half of them at mid-year, and then from that point forward. That's her recommendation. By no means is that going to, is a done deal, because it has to get through the legislature, and the legislature's going to hear a lot of resistance from the cities. And now they're also talking about revenue increases, she wasn't talking about that three weeks ago, and now you're hearing that. So things are changing.
But from your standpoint, Chip, the bottom line is, even if, even if we keep that entire $142,000, that just reduces the deficit that you've got in the budget.
That's the bottom line, that's correct.
So this is not surplus money that we're...
We've assumed it's gone, and it's, if we do get it, it only helps.
So why, the question, though, that Chip has just raised, or mentioned, not a question, that this is subject to decision by the legislature only with a two-thirds vote in both houses, and that's a high challenge. It may not happen.
It may not happen, but even if it doesn't happen, it just decreases the deficit, because we're going to be short $300-plus thousand.
I understand that, Dan, but let's get clear on what, where the money is coming from and what the components are.
Let me just say it one more time. The whole thing, meaning the whole initiative, is not subject to a two-thirds majority vote. It's broken into various components, and I can share that with you later. Another assumption I made is extending the ambulance transport fee from its sunset date of March 17th through year-end next year. And then I assumed, as is reflected in our adopted budget, the 1% optional property tax, which is spoken between the general fund, capital improvement fund, and fleet fund, $105,000 and change is what that amounts to in total. When you pencil all that out for 2011, and this is on page 19 of your agenda bills, Exhibit 1, 2011, I'm projecting the revenues are going to come in effectively right at budget, just a hair, half a hair actually above that. And I'm still projecting that we will not need to tap a rainy day fund, what's called the contingency fund. It's budgeted at 170, I have zero plugged in there. For 2012, for 2012, we were planning on drawing down our rainy day fund by $350,000. With these assumptions in place, I've had to bump it up $43,000 to 393, $393,000 for 2012, general fund only. So just trying to give you flavor, with the projected impact on the state, on the state's deficit situation on cities, and even with, factoring in the BLS, and I should mention, by extending the BLS through the balance of the year of 2012, that amounts to $181,000. Now, what's the impact on our 2012 revenues if, if the BLS ambulance transport fee is allowed to sunset on 3/17? So there's the 181 I just mentioned, so it bumps up my projected deficit, revenue shortfall, draw on the rainy day fund, it's all the same, from 393 to 573. Okay? Or if the council opts not to take the 1% property tax, that increases it in terms of its impact on the general fund only, $102,000, bumps it up from 393 to 494. Clear on that? That's an either-or situation. Again, we're currently budgeted at $350,000 in 2012, in terms of the draw.
100 and 5,000.
Yes, because the 1% gets split. Most of it goes to the general fund, a little piece goes to capital improvement fund, a little piece goes to the fleet fund, the fire apparatus, that's funded by bank capacity, so that 1% helps benefit them too. Okay, REIT. Actual revenue through the third quarter is up 18% and change, or $226,000, and that's excluding the Shorewood apartments sale last year for $544,000. The number of property sales, that's the driver of REIT, up almost 22%, so we've had almost 300 sales through 2011. The average sales price is down a little bit, 4.4%, it was at $975,000, is now down to $932. Budget adjustments. These are in Exhibit 1, are pages 22 through 24 of the financial status report, or the same ones are listed in Exhibit 2, which is the budget amendment ordinance, pages 29 through 31. As always, I break into two groups, those that are previously approved, and those are the new requests, the previously approved are the 1.6 million in Sewer Lake Line savings. Now, for those that try to pencil things out, and if you go and look at those adjustments and total them up, you won't get $1.6 million. I'm prepared to explain that if you'd like me to, but very simply put, what happens is, that $1.6 million, remember, you already spent or allocated, appropriated $400,000 of it for the First Hill Water Systems Project or Booster Pumps of it for the First Hill Water Systems Project, or Booster Pump Station, rather. And so the remaining $1.6 million, I take that, and it's already fully appropriated in the sewer fund. When we carried the balance over from last year to this year, that was a full appropriation. I want to transfer it all to the general fund. Now, why do I want to do that? Because that's from whence it originally came. Okay? It's an appearance thing, because it's an odd thing to take money out of sewer fund and distribute it around. And so I said, let's have it go to, this is the council from my staff, have it go to the general fund. It's an easier explanation with the auditors. It is an appearance thing. Then from there, I know, smile, it is ridiculous, I agree, but what happens is then we retain those things that are going to be spent in the general fund there, and those that will be spent in other funds get transferred out of the general fund to other funds, so that in a sense, they get double budgeted, if you will. All right? And then there are, you remember, the revenue stabilization reserve, $300,000 in general fund. Well, that's a transfer coming from the sewer fund to the general fund, but we're not going to spend it, so you don't need to appropriate it. So it's not in the appropriation. The $100,000 you're using to increase the left one long-term care reserve, that's just a transfer to a reserve, we're not appropriating it, so there's a total of $400,000 that doesn't even show up as a budget adjustment, because I already have the authority to transfer it. Now that I've thoroughly confused you. Do you have any questions?
You answered.
On that? Oh, good. This way, I won't read you through this horrific table I put together. I could save it for another time. I've mentioned that already. New requests. This is one that I was included in the second quarter financial status report back in September. This is reinstating the design phase of the Sandy Cove water main replacement project. It was originally budgeted in 2011. Then we'll be, we're working on the whole First Hill Booster Pump Station and Water System Improvements kind of project for 11 and 12. And the Booster Pump Station ended up being more than was projected, and so it was decided by staff, let's push it out to 2015 financially, for financial reasons. And then we've had some savings on another water utility project. And so what they're saying is, hey, we have some, an intern who can do the work for us, the design work, very cheaply. And so the $20,000 covers a bit of him, and it's in an agenda bill, agenda bill, excuse me, it's in a memo from Rona Lynn, her utilities engineer. It's attached to exhibit two, pages 27, 28, where she lays it out. But they're saying, hey, let's, the smart thing to do is let's go forward with this, and let's at least get the design work done. If we're fortunate, we might have enough savings to actually fund the construction in this next biennium. Questions on that?
Sorry, Chip, just going back, was there an appro, he said you move stuff, removing stuff from the sewer fund to the general fund. Is that in some, one of these ordinances?
Nope, because I already have the authority to do that.
Okay.
I already have the appropriation authority to do it. And so it's...
Okay, it's fine.
Okay.
So, Chip, the only question I would ask, and I asked this a little facetiously, and I'm sure I know the answer, but the way Rona's letter was written, I guess I didn't read it in close detail, but it kind of got the sense that we were handing off project design to an intern. And wonderful cost savings, but I just want to make sure that we're, we're doing good design work on this.
Instead of the finance guy addressing that, let me invite our assistant city engineer up here.
Good.
Well, Dan's good.
Yes.
Good evening, Ann Tenella Howe, Assistant City Engineer. And the, handing off the design to an intern is not necessarily what we mean. Rona will design and manage the ability of the intern to do the AutoCAD. So what she will do is design the project, hand those, hand off those hand drawings to the intern, and then he will put it into an AutoCAD format.
Thank you. I anticipated that was going to be the answer, but just wanted to ask.
Back in the old days, we, that would be handing it off to a drafts person at a drafting table.
Yes.
Okay, so we're at a point where I press the pause button, and your first two motions address these budget adjustments. The one is the typical waiving of the requirement for a second reading, and the second motion relates to adopting the attached ordinance.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, move to suspend the city council rules of procedure 5.2, which require a second reading for an ordinance.
Okay, or a second? Okay, moved to second, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt number, ordinance number 11-15, which amends the 2011, 2012 budget.
Actually, can I ask a question before we do that?
Well, it's got a motion on the table, it could be seconded, then I think you can bring your question forward. Is there a second?
Aye.
Okay, it's been seconded. Now, Mike?
Well, my suggestion was we talk about property taxes first. By approving Councilmember Bassett's motion, do we then lose the flexibility to change some of these expenditure amounts on, let's see, is this ordinance on 1115?
1115.
Yeah, so...
It has nothing to do with the property tax levy for next year.
Well, no, it does, because if we don't approve a property tax, then theoretically we're going to be short something. We might have to, by not approving this ordinance 1115, then that would give us the flexibility to make up some of those shortages that the property tax, is that correct?
If you were to go revisit how you decided to dispose of the sewer lake line savings, yes.
So maybe we should talk about the property tax first, to give us the flexibility to go back into the sewer lake line.
Well, there's another way to do it, and potentially, let me give you an example. If we go ahead and pass this motion on the budget adjustments, includes taking $365,000 out of the general fund and putting it in the capital reserve for South End Fire Station design. If we wanted to change our mind on that, that would three up, leave $365,000 in the general fund. So could we go back and amend the motion that's on the table at a later time when we're pressing property tax?
Help me out, city attorney, city clerk. I believe so.
Well, the motion is to adopt this document in its form right now. So if you wanted to amend the motion on the table, you could do that.
Yep.
They could adopt it now.
And then you can go...
And an hour from now.
You could make a motion to change it.
Make a motion to change it and adopt a new version.
A revised version.
That would be a record even for us, to change our mind in only one hour.
Well, that would be the best way to do it, if we're going to, since we have a motion that's been seconded on the table, let's take action on the motion, and then if we want to change our mind in an hour or 45 minutes.
Otherwise, it's a circular thing you can't get back.
Well, actually, actually, Mr. City Manager, that's not the way to do it, because isn't there an understanding that once we pass something, we don't revisit it unless we've got to jump through some hoops? Versus recognizing that there's flexibility, that we're suggesting flexibility in not approving this and moving some of these expenditures around, and then addressing it.
We do have a rule, the council to reconsider, you can do that, it's parliamentary. But the rule is that there are, Katie, I'm stalling here. I think it's two council members, and one of them has to be from the side...
Who voted against it?
That voted for it.
For it.
For it, correct.
Yeah, you have to have two voted for it. You have to make a motion to second who voted for it.
Actually, let's call the vote and vote for it.
Okay, well, first of all, we've got a motion that's been seconded, and we're at the discussion stage. Anyone want to speak to the motion? Okay, no?
Actually, I would like to speak to the motion, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think, I don't really like the timing of this, in that I think a big issue, especially for the citizens out there, have to do with the property tax. And it puts things in different perspectives. It puts property tax in different perspectives if we know as a council that we have some monies available through the sewer lake line that we can use to defer increases in the property taxes. So kind of for a parliamentary procedure, given what the city manager said, I'll vote for this with the intent of being part of the group, being able to, what do we call it, recall?
Reconsider.
Being able to reconsider. But under normal circumstances, I wouldn't vote for it, because I think there are more pressing priorities that would have used on the sewer lake line excess than is reflected in what we've previously agreed to.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Now we're going on.
Yes, we are. This slide is not in your agenda bill. This came to my attention today through Councilmember Ciro and through Rich to me. As you'll recall, this is back during our sewer lake line savings discussion, and I just wanted to check in and see if I, maybe I dropped the ball and missed on this. I don't think so.
No, this is, I mean, with all due respect, for this to come up and not be in the packet and not be publicly available, this would be completely out of, I mean, Jim made one comment at the meeting, three meetings ago, that he would, at some point in the future, make a proposal that something like this be done. And that's the only discussion there's ever been of this item. There's been no direction from the council to come back on this.
No, my recollection was that Jim offered to have that, those monies transferred for, directed to the South End Fire Station. You kind of looked to his left and looked to his right, and in not seeing any dissent...
There it goes.
That's, that's, that's not...
That's not, I mean, we are quick, we are quick to dissent when we want to dissent.
Whoa, 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 Jim didn't ask for anyone's concurrence to anything. He just said this is something that he would propose in the future. He didn't propose it then. You know, I mean, this is a major discussion point, which should not be coming up definitely in the middle of something else. And I don't understand that, Chip. Why would you bring this up now?
I just explained it to you.
Councilmember Grouse, because I brought it up, and because it was part of the meeting three meetings ago.
And since when does one council...
It's a lot of money.
Since when does one council member decide what goes on the agenda?
What's that?
Since when does one council member decide what goes on the agenda?
Well, every once in a while, one member decides on something, also the member Grouse.
Well, Mike emailed me earlier today about this, and my response, and I would give the response to the whole council, is neither Chip or I believe that we had definitive direction to go do anything on this. The dollars reside in the beautification fund right now. They don't have to be decided now, could be decided six months from now or a year from now. It's up to the council. But until some other direction is given, they'll sit there, and the staff doesn't have any authority to do anything with them until the council directs us.
I guess the point that I want to bring up, Counselors, is that that's yet another stash of money that we have available to us to use in creative ways, if you will. Okay?
Okay, and I said, and let's make clear, when I brought that up, due to the economy and everything that was going on, and what I said was the assumption that the community is going to be consuming the appetite for capital monies with the building of potentially the schools, that that put the fire station project way in the future. And this project, as you well know, is something that I personally have been working with, lobbying for, protecting for many years now. And I said at that meeting that I was willing to put that on the table if the council so decided, and appropriate that money towards the South End Fire Station. And that was what the discussion was. And so wherever that comes up at a future time with the council, and if those monies are ever looked at, I would suggest that they're capital monies, and they ought to be looked at for the South End Fire Station. And that was the discussion. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just checking in with the council. Make sure I got it right.
Well, I appreciate that. And Jim, I would like this to be on a future city council meeting in the not-too-distant future, because that's a lot of money, and we're going to be talking about revenue generation. So before we drive the ink on the budget adjustments, I recommend that this be an agenda item for our next meeting.
I hear this question from the council.
I agree with that.
But the problem is, we've got to make the tax decision today. So if you're tying it, trying, Mike, if, I have no problem bringing it up. I think the agenda for the next meeting, if I'm not mistaken, is pretty full. But I think it should definitely, I mean, it should be something that presumably will be considered in our planning session as a work item, because there's really nothing, no decision to be made at the next meeting which is going to impact anything that we're going to do today. Because we have to make all the tax and utility rate decisions today, by just, in order to comply with the timing requirements.
Well, what it does is tee up the whole issue of funding priorities that we've alluded to, and community funding priorities. And we all know that the school district is planning a major construction endeavor, tailing four new schools. And I think we all acknowledged in our joint meeting that we, that the community as well as the council considered that the community's number-one priority, highest priority. We talked about, well, what up, if something happens to the pool, and in the way of major repairs necessary, unforeseen major repairs. And then it was my recollection that a new South End Fire Station was a third-in-order priority. And so it's probably appropriate to look at that, look at a new South End Fire Station in that context. And by that, I mean, that's the reason I came up with this, the suggestion that maybe in the budget adjustments, we might want to recall, if you will, or rescind, or take $365,000 that we have allocated out of the sewer lake line savings to designing a South End Fire Station. And maybe that's not the best place to use, or the best use of $365,000 of sewer lake line savings. That's the context. I think we should...
We just voted for it.
Well, I know we did, but that, but Mike Ciro brought that issue, very issue up about, and we're talking about the timing of what are we going to do first, but all these issues are related. I mean, they're money issues, and they're related, and so we should be thinking and talking, debating in a broader, in that broader context.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Al, that all of this needs a broader context. If you want to talk about the fire station and how you fund the design and possibly the construction, rather than just one-off picking one source of money here and one there and debating these incremental pieces or opportunities of funds, I would urge that we do a much more strategic discussion of how are the various options, what are the various options for design and construction and finance of this. This sort of incremental stuff, I don't think is going to get you anywhere, except for just sort of wrapped around the axle. We should spend some time at planning session or some other session, sit down and say, these are the four or five ways you could think about building a fire station in the next five years.
But you know, you, this council had a full discussion of this, and on a 5-2 vote, council agreed to spend the money on these design fees. And I was one of the two people who voted against it. But I'm, five people voted for it, and staff has got direction to go ahead and do it. We just approved a budget resolution. Unless we amend that budget resolution later on, I would expect that you're harder work on starting the design work that you've already been authorized to do. So I would hope that you don't wait a second to do that and get it going, because that's the only way we're going to have an idea of what kind of fire station that we may want to build in the future. So you've been, you know, we shouldn't be doing anything. We've approved it 5-2, and poof, go on it.
And I just want to hitchhike on that. And maybe the proper timing to talk about the funds here, the beautification, is after the point when the council gets the design back, and then you start getting a strategic plan of funding it. And maybe that's the appropriate time. And until then, you just hold it there, and people understand that there's a, there's a mark on it. Yeah. And I'm, personally, I'm good with that, if everyone else is good with that.
Well, we can address it if we have the votes. If we have the votes, we can, we can change our mind, if you will. That's the way it works. Okay? So...
Okay, well, we just...
Actually, to that point, Mr. City Manager, how much of that 365 have you committed, roughly?
None of it.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, where are we on the 231,000?
The 231 is basically, from what I just heard from everyone, is it's in the beautification fund. It's still being earmarked for the original tent, which is that plaza area. And at some point after the design comes back... And at some point, after the design comes back from the South End Fire Station, it can be considered to be moved over to the actual development of it along with the rest of the funding at that time.
And we should discuss that at the planning session.
And that's the appropriate time to talk about it.
Well, that's not what I proposed. So my question is, you've got another proposal.
So what's your proposal?
I propose that it be an agenda item for our next council meeting, and that we discuss dispensing with it now as opposed to waiting for a planning session.
Okay, do you want to get a vote on this, council? Who's in support of what Mike has just requested? I can see your hands.
Takes two. It's on. That's three. Takes three. It's on.
You can request...
You can rest an agenda item.
You cannot insist on a specific date to vote. It's up to the mayor unless four people direct the mayor to put it on a specific date. All you can do with two is get it on the agenda.
I suggest that we get it on as soon as possible because it impacts our budget discussion. And I think, looking at the schedule for the next meeting, I think we have plenty of time to do so.
And to council, I'd like to point why is there an urgency on this? Because we're getting, there's a sensitive part that I have about increasing taxes during these difficult times. And we should do everything that we can, look in all the corners, all the crevices, and find out what monies are not obligated and prioritize projects as need be. And you know, it's a, this government is a growing concern. If it doesn't happen this year or next year, maybe the time, the right time for it to happen is when the economy changes. Right now, we've got to get, we've got to help our citizens get past this year, the next year, and maybe the year after that.
But let me offer this to you. You want to put it on there, and by, if I'm doing hand counts here in the council, you put it on the agenda, you don't have the votes to move it. And the, what you're hearing from your council members is that they want to have that discussion when you have a design and when you have a funding ready to go. At that time, they're saying it's appropriate time to discuss it. So I don't understand the, it's not going to, I mean, it's not going to move if you put it on the agenda. What's going to happen? Nothing. I know. So I'm trying to work through this with you, with you guys, but I'm inclined to put it off until the appropriate time, which is when we get a design back. Point blank.
That's your prerogative, Jim. That is not my preference. And I'm right there with Mike. I mean, you know, we're in budget crunching times here, and people are skipping to get by, and we should be doing the same thing. And we should be looking at every opportunity to find monies that we can bring to bear so we don't have to raise taxes or utility rates, particularly during the next two years.
And Jim, what I'm hearing from Al, and Al's one vote of seven, is that he's kind of had a change in heart in the priority of the $365,000. So by, you know, he's, by sinking $365,000 into the design is, you know, kind of wasting money because as he talked about, and I think there's consensus in the council, we want to clear the deck for the first priority in the community. And what is the first priority in the community? Is to let the schools go through with their bond. If we do a design now, if we do a design now, you know, it's going to sit on the shelf for several years.
So Mike, if you want to make a motion, make a motion on amending the resolution. You just voted for it. Since you voted for it, so you can make a motion to amend it.
Well, I mean, Dan, that's...
Do something.
What I thought, I mean, that's fine, but what I thought was recommended by the city managers, go through this whole thing. I mean, we started talking about it as we do normally, but what I thought was recommended was agreed by the council, was let's get through this whole thing, and then...
Well, we were trying to do that until this slide showed up on the scene.
All right.
Right. And now we're trying to move through this slide.
Okay.
And so basically, we've come up with, it's going to be discussed at this point at the proper time, which when the design comes up at that point. If you guys want to look at it at the planning session, it'd be a great time to do it next year also. But I don't see it, there's no purpose to do it this year because it's not going to move.
Well, as for your guidance, Mr. Mayor, after we go through this whole thing, then I'll ask to reconsider ordinance 1115. Is that okay?
That's fine. Okay, let's just move on then. Let's go on to drop this slide and go on.
Okay. Next, First Hill Water Utility Property. It's on page two of your agenda bill. It's located 297674th Avenue Southeast, just shy of 31,000 square feet. The council's intent is expressed in your agenda bill is to sell the property to pay off the bank loan that was secured to pay, to fund the emergency water supply well. The balance on that loan, the principal balance is $975,000. It's due June 1st, 2013. The current estimated market value, assuming subdivided into three lots, is 1.26 million.
And how much do we owe on the emergency well?
$975,000, principal.
Excellent. And the delta has to stay in the utility fund, is it?
Oh, yeah. It belongs to the water utility.
And given that you haven't given us a proposed motion on this, I assume the staff recommendation is that we...
Sit tight.
Sit tight because the market's going to get better and we're getting low interest rates on sitting on that property for right now. Is that, am I putting words in your mouth, or have I got that right?
That's correct.
As a point of comparison, the previous market analysis that was done in January 2009, for this, again, assuming subdivided into three lots, 1.8 million.
That was in when?
January 2009.
Really?
1.8 million. For just one parcel, it was a market value of 1.5 million, just as a point of comparison.
See, that type of decline in market value is right in line with overall market in terms of real estate values being down about a third from the peak.
Yep. And we don't have to sell now. We're financed just fine for the project. It doesn't make any sense to do it now. Wait and see if the market gets better.
Okay. And what would our real estate expert on council advise us to do?
Well, don't hold your breath in terms of it getting back to 1,800,000 anytime soon. What I would say, my opinion with confidence is, it's not going to increase in value more than marginally in the next three, four years. So, I mean, basically, what you, what we got now in terms of value is probably not going to get a whole lot better than that. Not going back to 1,800,000 anytime soon, I don't think.
And what monies do we forego by those properties not being developed for, let's say, another three years? Or the sales tax that would we, that we would, or the property taxes that we would receive from those properties, from the First Hill property?
What would be the property tax that we would?
Like, from new construction? Assuming we sold it, contractor developed it, and that's new construction. So what additional, the additional property tax, new construction? So how much is that? How much do we forego for the next three years by holding on to that property? You don't have to tell me, but I mean, that's something to consider. I think that's something for the council to consider.
It is a number. It's a small number, but it is a number.
Less than $10,000.
I mean, given what, given what Councilmember Jenke just said, if it's only going to increase marginally, and I respect some, some to consider.
And you also got to consider, you sell to a developer who wants to build three single-family homes, chances are, even if he bought it tomorrow, that wouldn't happen for a couple of years. I mean, he could sit on it for a while, and so those tax, you know, construction, sales tax, wouldn't happen until he starts building on three lots, which may be at least a couple of years.
Okay, I think we have consensus. Just, we're not going to... Okay, go ahead.
Next, we've already talked about the state's budget deficit and its impacts, so I'll move on. Ambulance transport fee, we've already touched on. I suppose I can simply just mention that, again, this was an assumed thing in my revenue forecast for 2012, that we would extend the period through December 31st, 2012. Motion number 10 on page 10 of your agenda bill provides direction to staff to come back to the council with an amended ordinance reflecting that, the change in the sunset date. Yes, sir?
So where will we get the report on the efficacy of the program? We got a kind of midterm report, so I'm assuming that in March, we're going to get the annual report and all that was promised when we first discussed this many moons ago.
My expectation, we would come back to council in March with a one-year report.
Okay, and my assumption at the time that this was passed was then, at that point, we would make a determination whether to extend it. So if we go ahead and approve this tonight, do we have a rejoiner clause where we can change our mind come March?
We can just modify the ordinance and delete the sunset provision or change the date.
If you, if you approve this to go forward, I think it goes right back to what we talked about before about reconsideration of something the council's passed. You can do that, and we have certain rules.
So I'm looking at my fellow councilmember Jenke when we had this discussion on this very project, and one of the cautions I had at the time was, when government creates a program, it's hard to stop it.
Almost impossible.
But I would, just if I could comment, I, when government creates a good program, it's important we don't stop it. And which, which is why I would actually go the other direction and just say that instead of extending the trial period to the end of 2012, we just eliminate the sunset provision from the ordinance. And if some future council wants to revisit this, so be it. But I don't think this thing should be, so to speak, on life support for the next, I couldn't help that, I'm sorry, for the next 13 months. Well, Dan, this is all about telling the truth. You know, we had this discussion, and it was a rather robust one. The deal was, we would wait a year, we would look at all the metrics, and we got the metrics tonight. But, you know, to take one data point and say, gosh, it's a glowing success, I mean, that is not using best available science to make decisions. And, you know, I, let me finish. And, you know, I just can't buy into that. So, you know, to make those qualifiers about, you know, it's a great program, and, you know, if it's a great program, we should keep it going. We don't know because we haven't done the annual report yet. So I think that's rather presumptuous on your part.
Well, listen, I mean, we've got a commitment to come back, as I stated in, later, was it March, in March date? Why don't we just wait and see then? That's what we've all agreed to, right?
Well, no, there's, no, there's something in Chip's motion that would extend the trial period through the end of...
Excuse me, excuse me. If he does, well, right, I'm sorry. I'm...
Right, and if the council, I would submit that if the council in its work plan was to direct staff to come back before then, that's appropriate to do. But right now, we don't know the 2012 work plan. Staff came back to council here in November and reported the results to date, so this council could make an informed decision regarding the 2012 budget, which is what we need to do now. And so staff could plan on the appropriate revenues that it will have for the 2012 budget year. And that's what they've asked us to do. I would prefer just eliminating the sunset provision, but if there's not four votes in the council to do that, then we should definitely go to 2012. But the other thing I would encourage council to consider is, is adding the mileage fee provision, giving mileage fee authority to staff, have them come back with an amendment to the ordinance, doesn't cost the residents of Mercer Island one penny, and it enables us to maximize the revenue from this, from this service. I believe you said it was about 18,000?
33,000.
No, 18,000 was the mileage fee, and the rest was the copay. And the copay, I'm not suggesting we go after, just the mileage fee.
I'll have to verify the numbers. My recollection of mileage was 15, the total with mileage and copay and...
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting the copay.
I understand.
I'm not, I'm just talking about the mileage, which just changes our reimbursement rate with the, with the insurance companies. It doesn't change anything in terms of costing islanders one penny more.
That's correct.
But it does enable us to basically get the same thing that AMR was getting before, which is, so puts us, puts us more in the position of AMR.
Well, I'd just like to say, remember the council, nothing is for free. Eventually, it comes back and it hits the taxpayers. This is a priority of service that, of public safety, that our constituents expect us to take off the top of our revenue stream. And what we're doing is, we're tapping into an inelastic revenue source because when the, when the person's on the gurney, I mean, how are they going to disagree with paying that tax? And that's why I have an issue with that. Has, you don't understand, Councilmember Brown?
No, I don't.
I don't.
Well, this is the issue that we had, this is the issue that I had with this tax. It had nothing to do with the efficiency of executing it, which I have all the confidence in the world that the department will always do. It has to do with the efficacy of doing this tax, which should be on the top of our revenue stream, of delivering this service to our citizens for public safety.
Mr. Mayor, move to direct staff to return to council in January 2, 2012 with an amendment to ordinance number 11C-01, which extends the sunset date of the basic life support ambulance transport fee from March 17, 2012 to December 31, 2012.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I'm making that motion because there are a lot of different directions we could go on this, but in the interests of moving our conversation forward, and we've got a lot of things to do tonight, this is not an unreasonable way to move, and I think we'll have an opportunity, as Rich points out, during the budget process next year to, to talk more about this. We'll have an opportunity at December of next year to talk more about this. We're definitely not taking it off the table. We are just moving forward.
Okay. Other comments?
I would propose an amendment to the motion that the, when staff comes back, it also include enabling legislation to allow the city to collect the mileage fee for consideration by the council at the same meeting.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion on the amendment?
Just, and again, I'm, without prejudice to what the council might decide at that point, I would like the council to have in front of it that issue, and we can vote on it at that point, and staff can completely inform us of what the dollar impact would be. But as long as we're going to take up a resolution on this, I would like to at least have the opportunity to, to consider that as a potential additional revenue source, which doesn't cost our taxpayers one red cent.
Jim, you might understand that when you say, bring it back with your ordinance, you mean in December of 2012?
No, you would, you would ask them to come back. They've got to come back. I thought you said come back in January of 2012, because they've got to come back with something which eliminates the sunset date of March. So I thought you said come back in January 2012. Did I understand?
I simply read what was here.
Yeah, the motion says January 2, 2012. Actually, I'd prefer, now that I think about it, just say January. I'm not sure we ought to do it on the, you know, the ceremonial first meeting and maybe get into the second meeting.
Yeah, we actually don't have a meeting on the second either.
Let's do it on the second. You all can show up. No, let's do it on January 2012.
Right, and it was almost saying, so when that comes up, on that motion, I'd like at least staff to tee up the mileage rate in an agenda bill, and then we can vote on it at that time.
Okay. That's the amendment? Any more discussion on the amendment?
Well, how do we, how do we, we fix the date afterward? We got to deal with the amendment first, right? And then we'll...
Right.
Fix the date issue.
Right. Okay. Okay, all of us in favor of the amendment? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
No.
Okay, that was four, three. Okay, now we go back to the, okay?
I'd like to change January 2...
I put January.
Okay.
I'd like to delete all the, after the first comma, and replace it with, with a sunset date of 3/17/12.
Okay, can you, all right, the clarity on that, so then the amended motion would be, could you read what the motion would be then? We have, Ally, could you, do you get it?
I missed the, I, I got to the replace, and it would say...
It's replace the, to eliminate the second, January 2nd. So it would just be direct staff to return to the council on January 2012, and then with a sunset date of March 17, 2012.
Which is what we have now.
Yeah.
Okay, can we vote on the amendment?
And that is to return, of course, obviously, to the original intent of, of this ordinance, this additional tax. Originally, we were talking, we'd sunset it in March, that's when we would make the decision whether it was a successful program or not, and my intent is to return that.
Well, while you've made the amendment, you would accomplish the exact same thing by just voting no on the original motion, so, but be that as a may.
Okay, do we have a second? Do we have a second on the... Okay, do we have a second? Do we have a second on the, the mic did, okay, discussion on it. Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that fails.
Amend my own motion. So I've moved to amend this with in January, rather than on January two.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Alls in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, that passes. All right.
Now, the whole motion, he just fixed.
Oh, he did the emotion, I'm sorry. Now, the whole motion as amended, twice, okay. Discussion on the main motion now as amended.
Well, I'm not going to support it for the simple reason that when this originally came up, I was a very reluctant, I vote for it, for all the good reasons that were debated and mentioned, but it just seemed to me at the time as a matter of necessity. And I think Mike Grady's kind of spelled it out pretty well in terms of, it was all based on a one-year trial period. And effectively, now what we're doing is doing away with the trial period and just going forward, and it's a permanent fee now. And the trial period is out the window because we're going to write it into the dollars into the budget. And we might put the label trial on it, but in reality, this is anything but a trial. We're done.
Comments?
Well, agree completely. And, you know, so much of what we do here should be based on trust. And, you know, we bought into the idea of looking at data and making decisions based on information and metrics that the chief brings forward to us. And to leap forward and to say, well, you know, we've heard enough, it must be working. You know, as a scientist, you know, I just can't buy into that way of making decisions. So I think we owe it to ourselves, we owe it to the citizens, to stick to our word and do what we say we're going to do.
Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion as amended, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
There you go.
Okay, it's four, three. Chip?
Okay, development fee surcharge. I don't recall if the council has been briefed on this or not, I do not believe so. This is on pages three and four of your agenda bill. And what this is, as a reminder, the city, yes, sir?
Oh, go ahead. I'm going to take a stab at it.
Yeah, go ahead. You're better at it.
The reason I take a stab at it, it's an EGOW Alliance initiative, and I'm on the board and have worked with Don Cole back there in the back over the years quite a bit about this. As you know, we have mybuildingpermit.com. It's a service provided jointly by now probably fifteen, twenty jurisdictions around western Washington. So you go online and get your over-the-counter permit. And up until this year, you could just do that, no charge for that, other than, you got to pay for the permit, but there's no additional charge for doing it online. Over the last couple of years, the Alliance has been working to go, and this is a major leap, go from just doing over-the-counter permits that way, but also now doing online permits for projects that require a plan review. Much more complicated set of considerations. When you think of process flows between planners and engineers and transportation people, and everything that takes to get a building permit, like a single-family home done, it's much more complex. In doing that, we're in the process, we're almost there to get that done on a regional basis. The Alliance has concluded the best way to finance this is no longer just have it be part of our annual Alliance participation fee, but to actually pay for it through a surcharge to the developers themselves directly. And, you know, initial reaction that might be for those people that are really sensitive to loading costs on developers is, well, why, they don't want to do that, our basic taxes should pay for that. Well, we went and asked master builders that question, and when they saw what benefits accrued to them of this, they immediately said, sign us up, where do we send the letter of support? We want this in every jurisdiction. And it's because when you do, when a builder comes into a counter and submits plans for single-family home or remodel, whatever, they are now required to come in with a set of plans about, you know, a rule about that thing. And the copying cost for that can be hundreds and hundreds of dollars per permit. This makes that go away. They just send us, give us a disk or, you know, send it over the internet, and we receive the permit application and the design, and do the review all digitally, simultaneous reviews by planners, engineers, everybody involved in the process that needs to take a look at it, and at the end, issue the permit based on those comments, and have saved them a great deal of money. So this is the mechanism for, that we as a group of cities and counties have decided is the best way to do it, finance it through a surcharge, and not through just a, our EGOW Alliance annual fee.
Okay, well, Rich, you know, I think this makes a lot of sense. And I think that, I'm certainly going to support this. My one fear, my only fear in doing this, I know for fact that some cities are going to want both. They're going to want the disk and one or two rolls of plans like that, just in case, or something like that.
Don, do we do that?
Well, I know we wouldn't do it, Don. I'm telling confidence in you that you're not going to do that. But the way it used to, the way it happens now before we go digital, I'm guessing, not us, but some cities ask for three or six copies of the plans or something like that, because every little department or corner in the department needs their own set.
Yeah.
So, on the basis, we're not, we don't do that, and we're not going to do it.
Absolutely right. There are jurisdictions that do that, because they aren't, you know, I'd like to think we're very well organized in how we do plan review. But some do it department by department, they get multiple sets, and for a major apartment building, you have to bring in the plans by the truckload. And it's enormous costs, as I'm sure you know.
So for the single-family contractor, you're saying that when they go into that room with all the windows, you're not going to have a hard copy there to explain the issues? Is that what you're saying?
What's this room with all the windows?
So, you haven't gone through the process. You haven't gone through the process.
This is the room with all the windows?
There's a room there with all the windows that everybody can see.
You mean down the hall there?
Yeah.
I know what you mean. The fishbowl, fish tank.
So, Don, the question is, when a permit is issued, will a hard copy exist? Or some version of it that can be inspected?
No, 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 no. The question is, through the process, when there's the give and take, and there's the discussion of, explain to me, what do you mean, I have to change this? And the owner, and the general contractor, and Don get in that room with all the windows, and they throw the copy, the hard copy down. Are you saying you're not going to have the hard copy there anymore?
Yeah, there's, in the permit center, there are no hard copies. So, the only time there's a hard copy, we actually accept the plan digitally over the internet. We'll actually mark it up digitally using different software, markup software. Customer replies digitally, and then we actually issue the permit by encrypting a watermark with an approval logo on each page. We send that to the customer, and then they go ahead and they print that out, and they have a copy with the approved copy with the watermark at the job site.
They don't have to have.
No, they keep that on the job site, because inspectors build it and inspect it.
So they do have to print one copy at the end?
One copy at the job site. But the good news is, they could print multiple copies for all their subs. Everybody's working off of that approved set. As you know, in the building industry, that had been problematic, because there's only one stamp set before that was city stamped set.
And so the local, low-volume, single-family contractors doing that now?
Yeah, in fact, as Rich stated, the master builders gave a letter of support, they really liked the idea. They're saving, and I think Mike Kaser on the agenda bill mentioned that they're saving hundreds of dollars. It's over a hundred dollars for the typical single-family residents, just in printing costs. And that doesn't include staff time to assemble the plans, go down to the permit center, submit it, you know, and travel costs and staff time. Everything now is basically, over the internet, they, at 24/7 at their desktop, you know, submit the plans electronically. So it's, we've been doing it for three years, actually, in a different process. It won't be as sophisticated as this process. And we are doing, over fifty percent of our plans are now submitted electronically. And when you go by volume, because all of the bigger projects do that, we're about eighty percent of all the plans are submitted electronically.
The other advantage of doing it through the EGOW Alliance is we're doing it together with all these other jurisdictions, and we're all doing it the same way. So the advantage to a builder who builds homes in multiple jurisdictions, you can start to see, it works for the housing industry.
Okay, now I have a question about the additional fee. So prior to this, we were taking this out of, I say this, prior to the, the, the surcharge, thank you, we were paying through the DSG budget?
Yeah, basically, we're financing it through the general fund. And it would have been, actually, you know, it was being paid out of, the Alliance fee is just coming out of a general government account, right? So not even out of DSG, it's just part of our master dues, if you will, to the Alliance. And that helped pay for my parksandrec.com and several other of the services on the Alliance.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Question. Yes, I have a question for Chip. How did you determine the split for Mercer Island, the 1.3% surcharge and 1.2% city tax surcharge?
Yeah, a dartboard was not involved, actually. Gathered together staff who are familiar, IT staff, DSG staff, and kept me out of it. And they figured out what are the costs that are currently and have been in the past few years committed to that. Ended up being, it's like twelve, fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand dollars in round numbers. And so that 1.2% is intended to generate about fifteen thousand dollars annually to cover existing costs.
It's less than some of the other cities are charging, but it's what would be our actual cost then?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to pass resolution number 1447, which establishes a technology fee to process online development permits effective January one, 2012, and thereafter.
Okay, move in second, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, Chip?
I really didn't anticipate it being that easy. Okay, bank property tax capacity, this is FYI purely. As a reminder, what is bank property tax capacity? It's the cumulative property tax increases the council could have taken, for example, last year. We didn't take a one, or this year, I mean, we didn't take a 1% increase, but didn't. And so, we don't have very much. It's just shy of $200,000 is the total bank capacity. If you like it in percentage terms, that's about just shy of 1.9% of our current total 2011 levy. I gave you a little metric in your agenda bill. Each half a percent of bank capacity equals almost $53,000. That is an impact on a $950,000 homeowner of about almost $6 annually. Questions on bank capacity? And it only takes a simple majority to tap into it. There are certain circumstances where a supermajority is required, but that's not in play this year.
So just, if the decision point, I think, for the council, I mean, I don't know what should come here first, because there's also the basic question of the 1%. So probably, if we don't have enough votes to do the 1%, I would think the bank capacity is academic. So I'm wondering whether we should have the discussion of the 1% first, before we talk about bank capacity.
Actually, I was teeing this up now. It precedes the left one, retiree cost discussion that you guys wanted me to bring back to you?
Right, but that's, I understand that, but that's, but that, I still, as I was saying about an hour ago now, I would really like to have the 1% discussion first, before we completely wilt up here. And then, because I think a lot of things follow from that to see where we got.
What I'd suggest you do is, first, get the NORCOM budget done. You have to do it. I mean, it's a requirement, or we're not going to have dispatch. And then you've got utilities and property tax, and you guys can decide which you want to do first. I'd knock off the NORCOM one. Just get a vote, and then you're down.
I would move pass resolution number 1446, which approves NORCOM's 2012 budget allocation to the city of Mercer Island.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right.
So you're down now to utilities and property taxes.
Is there a?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Right?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt number 1116, option two. Is that the right one, Chip?
Option eight. Option two is the no increase.
What's that?
Option two is the no increase.
Thank you, I just wanted to be extra special, sure. Option two, which appropriates funds and fixes the amount of property tax to be levied for the year 2012.
Okay, it's been moved in second, discussion.
Just need to get up to speed on which is, which, that I make sure I'm saying the right things here. So, Chip, could you just summarize for us what you've teed up?
Oops, sorry. So, in terms of the property tax levy, right? Option one, option one assumes a 1% increase. I've duplicated up here on the screen what's in your agenda bill. And option two assumes no increase. And so that 1% increase also applies to the levy lid lift, the 2008 parks levy that was passed. So that would increase it by 8,00820. The total 1% equals 105 and change, 105,460, as I recall.
Can you, Chip, the, on the parks levy, and my memory has gotten foggy on this one, there's a reason we ended up below the 900,000 that had been approved by the voters, in which if I recall correctly, it was the interplay between that and the six-year Lutha Burbank levy.
Correct.
So that is no longer a factor anymore.
Correct.
So technically, if we were to carry out the will of the voters, that would now be at least at nine, I guess 900 is probably the highest you could go.
Then 1% thereafter.
1% thereafter. So, right now, the only reason we're at 882 is because of that offset, which no longer exists.
That's correct.
Well, I'd like to speak to it, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, please.
Here again, I'll go back to my constant theme, or, we're in tough times. These tough times aren't going to last forever. Foreclosures on the island, I don't think they've decreased any, they may have increased some. But I see short cells around East Mercer Way. There are folks, the mayor referenced it a couple meetings ago, there are folks out there that are hurting, and because, you know, we're on Mercer Island, it's something that they just keep inside. But let it be known that there are folks out there that are hurting. And every time we raise taxes, it goes, and it's the tipping point for somebody, or it is the tipping point for some households out there. Let it be known. And also, you know, the revenue that the city is receiving from new construction and from the levy refund, the city, we are, we are getting a 1% increase in property tax revenue. So let that not go, let's not miss that. From new construction, Councilmember Grouse, from new construction.
I understand what it is, but that's, because you have to provide, you have to provide additional services for that. That's why.
No, it's more of a step. It's not, it's not, it's not a straight line. It's a step increase. And as far as I'm aware, that we haven't hit a point where there's a step increase in services from new construction. So the city, we are, the city, we are getting additional property tax revenue already by maintaining, by keeping, even though we keep the rate increase to zero.
Okay, anyone else? Dan, and then Jane?
I mean, I will vote against this. And I'd be very candid, where I think we should come out as a council on this. There's several, there's several issues that are at play here. One is the issue of whether we take the 1%. And I firmly believe that we can no longer forego the 1% like we did last year. And if I'm not mistaken, we even for. for, it was foregone the year before that as well. I don't recall, but I know we went without it last year. It's been several years over the past, probably over the last 10 years, we've foregone the property tax increase. We have cut city services to respond to that. We have dipped into the rainy day fund. We now have a budget in front of us for 2012, which is in the red. It is, in my opinion, fiscally incorrect for us to not raise revenues to reflect our actual expenses. You know, it's all well and good to acknowledge that people are hurting, and I don't minimize that for a second, Mike. But I also know that we are tasked with providing essential city services, that everyone in this council regularly refers to, such as police, such as fires, such as roads, such as parks, and that all costs money. And we have, for years, avoided property tax increases. This is a 1% increase, which I think we need to take. And I, well, I'm going to leave it at that, because I think we need to look at some other issues here. But at least on this, to go away and not take the 1% now, at a time when you're running a deficit, I just don't get it.
Jane?
Oh, well, I guess my, I have a question. Am I right, Chip, that the 2012 budget is based on taking the 1%?
Yes, it's, it's assumed.
And would have some major ramifications if we don't?
To the tune of 100,000 and change to the general fund and a few thousand in other funds.
Yes, 105,000.
Okay. Any other, yeah, Mike and Bruce?
Not long ago, we had a fruit fight over savings from the Seward Lake Line project. And, you know, as I recount some of the pots of money that were allocated, you know, we funded the $15,000 study of human resources, which we heard about a little bit this evening. We had $180,000 in settlement costs. We had $70,000 for a TOD study, $30,000 for a sustainability program. I can go down the list. The point that I'm making here is those are not our top priorities as a city government. It's public safety. So, to characterize it as somehow we don't have any pots of money around from which to draw, you know, we talked about $231,000 for a fountain downtown. Okay, so, I'm weighing the fact that we've talked frequently at this council about those in need. We've had many a discussion, and the mayor was very articulate about those in need in our neighborhoods. And we're funding hundreds of thousands of dollars in activities which are not our top priority. But now, we're going to increase utility rates, and we're going to increase property taxes, so we can essentially pay for all of these items which are not our top priority. That, to me, is not my job on this council.
Bruce?
Chip, the rate of inflation we're running at right now, can you help me with that?
Yeah, it's high right now. In June, it was 3.7%. And the October one just came out, three, right around the same number, 3.8 or so, CPIW for the Seattle area.
And the property tax, that's not indexed to inflation, right? That's just a fixed number.
You're just limited to 1%.
So, in fact, if we look at the buying power of the money that 1% buys, or that our property tax buys with a 1% increase, we're actually seeing a contraction of the, of the buying power of that money of something more than 2%.
It's a point I make from time to time, though it's unpopular. It used to be 50% of our total revenues in the general fund budget is now 45%. It's gotten smaller over the years.
So, if you look at the, over the arc of time, the 1% cap on property taxes actually leads to a decline in our ability to fund the services of government, because we are trailing inflation.
It puts the pressure on other revenues, become more reliant on sales tax, utility tax fees.
Yeah. The way I look at this, fellow councilmembers, is that we're not indexed to inflation. I don't see this, I don't look at this as a tax increase. I look at this, actually, as a tax decrease to our citizens in terms of what we're doing, in terms of being able to provide the services of government to our citizens. So, I support the 1%.
Councilmember Basil, let me just make sure I understand this. So, this tax increase, you look at as a tax decrease?
I look at this, yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure that anybody gets it out there. I guess it is indexed in a way, if you will, with reference to new construction, because new construction gets put on there in addition to whatever we, whatever we say here on the council.
Okay. More discussion? Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Again, all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Nay. Okay, that fails. Someone like to make a motion? Or do you want to, Dan, you got the floor?
Yeah, what, sorry. Chip had said before that he can craft a motion depending upon what we decide. So, rather than, we all know the issue. The question is whether it's going to be 1% or some other percentage. And it's not going to be zero, because we just voted that one down. So, to me, there are two issues which I would like the council to consider. And then, once we vote on that, it's going to decide what the motion we should eventually say, and then Chip can craft that. The two issues are the left one issue that we talked about at considerable length at our last council meeting. And the hole that we are in at the moment, and that future generations will be in unless we start figuring out some way of digging ourselves out of it. What, what, one idea for doing that is to take the same approach that we did with firefighting equipment several years back, where we tapped bank capacity and essentially dedicated money to a fund, which would be used in that case to ensure that we had the necessary resources to maintain our fire equipment for the foreseeable future. And I think we can all sit here and say that was been an excellent decision we made at the time, and has given us good firefighting equipment as a result, and assured us a revenue stream that will enable us to continue that for years to come. I think this is an opportunity to do the same thing on the left one and related issues that we talked about last time, that we need to, we need to act fiscally responsibly on this, and start creating a dedicated resource, which, over time, will hopefully address this issue. So, I would, I would ask the council to consider going for a half percent out of bank capacity. That would be earmarked for adding to the reserves we now already have for the left one and the, for the Fireman's Pension Fund and left one. We know that that would translate at the current level to a little over $50,000 a year. That'll continue to go up every year by a very small amount. But it does mean that, over a period of time, we're tackling the problem, and that we are, that 10 years from now, a council is not going to have to sit here and say that they've got a much bigger problem than need be. You know, Mike, I know you're going to oppose this, but you were the one that made it very clear in the last discussion that this was something we needed to address. And this is a way to do it, and make sure that we have a dedicated revenue stream which starts addressing this on a going-forward basis, and that we don't sit here, year after year after year, saying, well, can we take $50,000 here, or 100,000 there, and basically kick the can down the road. So, this, that's, I would ask the council, without making a motion, just to say yea or nay, after we discuss it as to whether we're interested in pursuing that.
Well, Dan, I guess I'll tell you where I am. I'm going to support that previous motion, Option 1, the 1% property tax increase. And that's primarily because, as you point out to us, that we have a budgeted deficit that's going to be $392,000 next year. And, you know, we've done a lot of cutting. So, I think it makes sense taking the 1%. However, I did tee up earlier, and this is related, but not, not part of the immediate discussion, it's that the funds, whether it's $365,000 that we earmarked for Design in the South and Fire Station, or the $270,000 for Pyramid Plaza, that's no longer going to be Pyramid Plaza. But, so, you add that together, I mean, you've got, you've got some funds there that we can redirect, or, you know, not, not, not we, not me, but the next year's council can redirect somehow and cover shortfalls. And whether you take a portion of that to address the left one issue or not, that's a possibility. I don't think it's, it needs to, you know, the idea of dedicating 50 grand from an additional half percent on the sales, on the property tax is not necessary, because we can redirect a portion of one of those pots of money that add up to more than $600,000, take even a small portion of that. The other thing I might point out here, and if I'm reading the schedule right, on page 33, down at the bottom, these numbers are based on investment rates of return assumed to be 0.75%, growing annually by 0.25%. Those are money market kind of returns, they're next to nothing. If this kind of money was invested wisely from day one, you should be able to get at least 3.5% in a high-grade corporate bond fund. So, it just seems to me that the funding for left one that's been outlined here is not, not as dire, or not in as bad shape as one might conclude. And I'm thinking also, for the reasons the staff's recommending, we just stay with where we are on that, that that's just another reason we don't go forward with a quote sinking fund arrangement for the left one obligations that are coming down the road. So, again, I'll go for 1%, but, but just that.
Any other comments?
Okay, I'd like to, I really appreciate this chart right here. I think it's very, it's very enlightening on a liability that we have out there. And the way I read this is that on the, one of the top of our lists, when we go to budget time, is the 521, for instance, in 2012, is the 521 plus the 210 is almost a quarter of a million dollars that we need to finance. And as Councilmember Jenke referenced, we have that in this Seward Lake Line slash slush fund that we've got from the Seward Lake Line excess. And so, there's no reason to go into the bank, the bank property tax for it. And here again, remember, there are folks out there that are hurting. You're not going to know about it firsthand necessarily, but you know they're there. Just look at the foreclosures and short sells around East Mercer, around the Mercers.
Other comments?
Okay, I would support this. But I think that there is, I mean, an interesting question. I guess the place I differ with you, Mike, is, is to suggest that Seward Lake Line, you know, represents a slush fund at this point, because you've got to then point to what you want to not do. And if it's the fire station, you know, then it'd be worth saying it's the fire station I don't want to do, or if it's something else you don't want to do, speak to that.
Well, okay, okay. Actually, you know, it's, the fire station is not the right time to do the fire station. And as I, it might not be a slush fund, the contingency and the revenue stabilization fund. But as I, as I characterized it many months whenever we first did that, you know, I am comfortable by not raising property taxes and digging into the revenue stabilization fund or the contingency fund, because that ultimately is the Seward Lake Line excess also. And, and like I mentioned at the very beginning when we did that, I looked at it as not money laundering, but a way, just taking it from one bucket to the next. And, and we can still make budget by using the revenue stabilization or the contingency fund, which came from the Seward Lake Line.
Jim, just, what I think, and I, I completely agree with Al on the rate of return. And we had, we had talked about that at the last meeting. That question came up. And I believe, Chip, you had said at that point you were going to come back to the council with, whether it's in some sort of proposal to tell us how you're going to invest that money so we can increase that, that rate of return. That was one of the things that will be, is on your, your agenda to handle sooner rather than later. So, but, so, even, but even if we assume we can get up to 3% or 3.5% on a long-term basis, I think it's, I think it's safe to say that we are still have a, maybe not as big a hole, but we still have a significant hole that we need to dig ourselves out of. So, I, I agree that it's not as big as probably this chart shows us. But I'm also mindful of the fact that, that two years ago, when we did our last actuarial study, it wasn't as big as this chart showed us either. And we got hit with an actuarial study which dramatically increased it. I don't know what's going to happen two years from now. What I do know is that every year that we don't start dedicating more funds to this, we're going to have an issue. And I also know that, having been on this council for 12 years, that unless we exercise fiscal discipline by earmarking money, it won't happen on a going-forward basis. And that's why I'm saying that this is an opportunity, now that we've just rigorously reviewed this issue, to take an affirmative step to address it on a going-forward basis.
If I may, real quick, Mr. Mayor, what, when I say fiscally disciplined and fiscally responsible, a high priority like this shouldn't come to the, I'm glad to see that you've gotten the religion on the reality of this. But it shouldn't come to the end of the budget cycle, where it's either this financing, a mandatory obligation, or raising taxes. No. What I'm suggesting is wait till the biennium budget, and this is the first thing you finance. This is the first thing you finance. And then, after we go through all the finances, all the, the optional type things that we have, the mini-optional type things, then we choose between the optional projects, the good ideas, the optional projects, the optional services, and raising taxes. That's, I just don't like waiting to the very last minute and having it, we either have to do this mandatory, or raise taxes. No, we do this first, and then what competes on raising taxes are the optional services and projects. That's what's fiscally responsible.
Would someone like to offer a motion?
I, no, there's no motion. I, I would move that we direct staff to, to prepare a resolution which would include a 1.5% property tax increase, of which a half a percent would be dedicated to address the left and left one and firefighter issues.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
We've discussed it.
Well, we've got to do the formality. Okay, discussion?
Does that mean, does that mean we, for the half percent, would be using bank capacity?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
And it would be specifically earmarked for?
Left one.
Left one. Right. Okay, any more discussion?
Other than to reiterate Mike's comment, I mean, you know, I think of when I do the bills at home, I pay the mortgage first, I pay insurance, I pay all the things that I have to pay. And then, if we want to buy a ping pong table, or whatever, that discussion comes after we decide whether or not we have any money left. And I find that the rules here just are distorted, in that, you know, we go through the Seward Lake Line discussion, and everybody gets their little pet projects funded, and then, oh, by the way, now we're in a situation where we have to balance the checkbook, and we don't have enough money. It's, it just defies logic. And it is so contrary to what, you know, people, hopefully, that are watching at home, do on a, on a, almost a daily basis. I mean, government is supposed to be the good example. And we have shown that we have a proclivity toward spending money on whatever the pet project, and then, at the 12th hour, going, oh, my gosh, we forgot to pay the mortgage. project, and then at the 12th hour going, oh, my gosh, we forgot to pay the mortgage. And that is just not being responsible. I'm sorry.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, it's 4-3. So Chip, I think you're going to need to modify the ordinance, and then they'll have to vote on it. Or how, I guess they just did. You just have to modify the ordinance.
Right.
He needs to put the new numbers in the ordinance. He can do that while we talk about utilities.
Can we just do utilities? Do you need to be here?
That's what I was going to suggest.
Actually, we can have Ben do a presentation on utilities.
I was going to let you know, our vice chair, Ben Levy, is here. If you'd like to hear a few things from the vice chair.
I think we ought to just see if the council wants to start making motions.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll dive in. I'm on number five on page 10, if anybody wants to follow along.
Yep.
Pass resolution number 1443, which establishes classifications of water users and a schedule of charges for water usage, a schedule of rates for fire service, a schedule of special service charges, meter and service installation charges, and connection charges effective January 1, 2012, and thereafter.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved in second, discussion. Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, does someone want to make a motion?
All right. My number six, pass resolution number 1444, which establishes rates and connection charges for sewage disposal services supplied by the City of Mercer Island effective January 1, 2012, and thereafter.
Have a second? Okay, moved in second, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
Anybody?
You're doing great, Chris.
Pass resolution number 1445, which establishes the bi-monthly utility fee for the emergency medical and ambulance services supplied by the City of Mercer Island effective January 1, 2012, and thereafter.
Second.
Okay, moved in second, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, and I think that wraps it.
So how about a five-minute break or 10-minute break?
I need a five-minute break to add a whereas clause.
All right. Okay, moved in second, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
Anybody?
You're doing great, Chris.
Pass resolution number 1445, which establishes the bi-monthly utility fee for the emergency medical and ambulance services supplied by the City of Mercer Island effective January 1, 2012, and thereafter.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, it was a 4-3.
Mr. Mayor, I move adoption ordinance 1117, option 3.
All right.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Dan, you want to speak to it?
It's just a sister motion to 1116. We've got to do both of them to make it official.
The first one is the ordinance that sets a dollar amount. The second one sets it in terms of a percentage increase. The state law requires us to do both.
Okay.
Some attorney suggests.
Some attorney. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Move on then. I think that wraps up everything on.
That's regular business.
There's one item, though, that I saw that wasn't there, and Chip, I brought it to your attention, was, and Rich, the SCA membership.
The mayor asked me to find a way to get it in there, and frankly, I just, I forgot to do it, but it was, it's a worthy thing to ask you. You don't have to make any budget decision, just give us a heads-up whether or not this is something you're interested in. We took 2011 off from the Suburban Cities Association dues. It amounts to, I don't know, 13, 14,000 a year, or something like that. We did it as a budget-cutting measure last year. And Jim's, please ask. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, the reason, we are the only city that took that course during this, and it was a time for us to, you know.
At your suggestion?
At my suggestion. Well, my encouragement because I thought there were some policy issues and things that SCA needed to correct. And through this year, they have demonstrated that they have been receptive and they've done that. I also think it brings your attention for the future on this council, those people who wish to be on regional committees, you will not be placed on those regional committees unless we are members of SCA. They are the appointing body. And so we have this new group that's been very, I think, successful this year. It's the Mayors of Lake Washington, and we've been meeting monthly, and that's been good. But also, I think it's wise to stay engaged with the other 35 cities that make up suburban cities. And so with that, I would hope that you would support that, and we are out. And so, um, with that, I would hope that you would support that, and we're out one year, and then come back in 2012, and then you can see what it looks like in the future.
Hey Jim, so how is the discussion of this item different from the discussion we attempted to have about the two-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand in Pyramid Plaza that Dan was upset, to even go on a screen and come up for discussion?
This is, this is a membership deal, it's time to redo the membership, it's time-sensitive, and that's why I brought it up. If you want to get into the 2012, there's a call for nominations right now in the committees, if you wish to be considered, this is the time to move, so it's your call.
Can we put on, on the agenda for next time and talk about it, or is it going to be too late?
No, it's never too late, it's just if you wish to do it, I, personally, I, I am not lobbying for anything, I'm not wishing to be on any of the committees, I did my time in SCA for many years, um, I just thought that it would be wise if you've got a new council member coming on board, um, something to consider.
Well, why don't we talk about our planning session?
Well, yeah, uh, obviously, it's immaterial to me, because I'm not going to be here, but I would suggest that you might want to consider some consistency in terms of how, and what terms you address items that are not on the public's agenda.
Agreed.
Okay, fair enough.
Mr. Mayor, if I can ask for some guidance here on the, um, on ordinance 1115, that we thought we might want to reconsider, uh, maybe it would be sufficient if the council just directed the city manager to hang tight on expending any of the, um, the three-sixty-five, three-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars, and then we can address it at the planning session, maybe?
Are you talking about the fire station?
Right.
You've all, the budget, we've already approved that expenditure to move forward.
Okay, then, Mr. City Ma, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to reconsider ordinance 11-15.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Did you vote for it, Mike? Did Mike?
Yeah, he voted for it.
Okay, so then, we do have two votes, a vote in the affirmative, you can bring it forward for reconsideration. Do you like to speak on it?
Yeah, I'd like to speak about the, uh, you know, this is some expenditure amount of money of three-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand, uh, the timing for the south end fire station, I'll suggest, is not right, especially with the bond that the, uh, the school is going to float, and if we go ahead with this expenditure for a design, it's a design that's going to sit on the shelf for, for many, many, for many years, I'll say, uh, until, um, until our citizens recover, if you will, from the, from the school bond. Uh, I think that money can be better spent, uh, council member Grau has just talked about the urgency and the need for the, the left account, uh, there's also, I'm sure there's other things that we can talk about, um, when, uh, during the planning session for the three-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand.
And I'd just like to speak reconsideration.
Um, this may be over-complicating the matter, but, uh, when we discussed this before, um, it was felt that three-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars for design of the fire station was really generous, perhaps overly so, um, and so, I'm wondering if we could take a portion of that, um, save it for design, and put a hundred-and-fifty-thousand toward left.
Okay, okay, the reconsideration is, and, Katie, if you could help me, it's basically, the reconsideration would be the entire motion, not a portion of it, or...
Correct.
Or modifying it, so...
So you're voting whether you want to reconsider.
That's all the different fundings that were, it was in that motion.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
You're voting whether you're going to reconsider it.
Right.
And then, if you're going to reconsider it, then you have to...
Right, reopen it up.
Correct.
Okay, but just understand what that looks like.
Two-step process.
Actually, I wasn't very clear on that, so thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, discussion on reconsideration.
So the, uh, the discussion that I have is, uh, I'd like to vote that we reconsider ordinance 1115, and then...
If that's successful...
If that's successful, tee up the disposition of the three-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand.
Basically, reconsideration, you basically, the original motion then, is being, you're reconc, you're redoing, it's a redo, okay? Okay, so reconsideration, all those in favor of reconsideration, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay, nay, can I see hands on this? The people who wish to reconsider, see your hands, one, two, those who say nay, okay, it fails, all right. Okay, so that ends regular business, uh, other business.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I've got a procedural question, we had a study session on agenda bill four-six-eight-six, um, and my question here is, were the cameras running as we had our study session?
Right, uh, were the cameras, typically, they are not running.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
The question was, were cameras live during the study session? No, they're typically not.
It would, we would require a very large modification to our sound system in order to do that.
That's right, that was my understanding. So, Mr. Mayor, I think, in order to be fully transparent to the public, uh, someone should summarize the study session for the public, so that they have an understanding of what transpired during the study session.
Is there, let me ask a real quick question, is there, the, the study session, there is record of this study session?
Yeah.
Okay?
We, I do a synopsis of what was presented and discussed in, in the minutes.
Right, all right, is that what you're looking for, Mike?
No, actually, I'm looking for a verbal summary for those watching at home, so, uh, for those who were unable to attend the study session, they have an understanding of what this HR audit report was all about, and what the results were.
I, I'll, that, that's what the minutes are intended to do, and, and we certainly can't do a verbal transcript at this point, because nobody was taking notes like that, so we're, we would just do normal minute notes, I don't know that, I don't know if you're looking for a transcript?
No. Actually, what I'm looking for is more transparency in our operations, so, we had an agenda bill which was under discussion during a study session, which quite frankly, should have been under regular business?
Wait a minute, timeout.
Yeah.
That is absolutely an error, that's not a...
Every item that comes before the city council is an agenda bill, there are always agenda bills, agenda bill is only a tracking device, so, I've heard this said several times in the last couple of days, that it's an agenda bill, how can it be in a study session? Every study session item is an agenda bill, has an agenda bill number.
Well, I will note, Mr. City Manager and Mr. Mayor, that you received an email from me asking agenda bill four-six-eight-six to be a part of regular business.
And this because you asked for it does not mean it's necessarily the entire, we'd modify the, uh...
Finish my sentence?
Well, wait a minute, Mike, because you started to throw some bombs out there that are very political and self-serving.
And this, this is in honor of...
Do not interrupt me.
This is not on our agenda to be debated right now, so we shouldn't be talking about this right now.
I have the mic, and I'm making a comment that I requested agenda bill four-six-eight-six to be a part of regular business, I received no reply from either the city manager or the mayor.
I didn't receive any request from you, I did from Mike, um, and I did from, I did from Mike, but I didn't get one from, from you.
And this isn't on the agenda for discussion right now.
In any case, it was the mayor's decision.
So my question is, why was it not moved to regular business?
Because it was more appropriate in that format, in that discussion, to have a substantive discussion with the council, and that was my decision, and you had, uh, Bruce, who worked with this through, and a consultant, and this is the way that we have always brought these type of matters forward.
Jim, you had a request for two council members to do that.
This is, this is not appropriate for discussion, he didn't have it on the agenda, you can talk about it afterwards and yell at him afterwards, but for right now, on the record, this isn't appropriate, and you know that.
Miss City Attorney, no one is yelling at this mic.
Well, that's the difference of opinion.
Hey Mike, it's my call, and so be it. Let's go on, is there anything else you'd like to talk about?
Yes, I would, I would move to table the executive session, because the mayor and I have yet to have a conversation about what's in the executive session.
Okay, uh, for the record, I called Mr. Grady twice, and he did not return either of my phone calls, so, I would say to the council, if you'd like to proceed with the executive session, please let me know so at this time.
I'll second that.
There's a motion at the table, is there a second?
He wants to, if there's a second to the motion?
I second it.
Okay. All those in favor of tabling the executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
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 Okay, it's going on. Okay, anything else? Planning schedule?
Appointments?
Uh, planning schedule has one item that, on there that isn't on there, um, I failed to pull off, parking in the Mercer Ways, we got sufficient direction at your last meeting that we don't need to bring it back to you, we may bring back to you in, uh, first quarter of 2012, our implementation plan, but there's no more policy decisions to be made, so, scratch that.
Rich, I noticed on that plan, you only have a couple issues down there of things to be considered, and I, I recall there being a half a dozen or eight down there.
Uh, yeah, there were a, a number of items that the staff, uh, had put there as a sort of targets for them to, it was sort of the below-the-line stuff, these little items the staff wanted to get through, they're on the council's work plan, there were just a number of items, for example, um, well, we got the natural gas franchise one here, which still needs to be done, um, I think the, Katie had a couple of things that we'll bring back, uh, was it cable? Oh, yeah.
Well, I'm kind of using that as...
Gas franchise, I'm gonna, I'll do that, I think, for Jane.
I'm kind of using that as a, as a, um, tool for the council, you know, I see those things on there, and I'm tracking it, we've got it, it's, it's on somebody's list, and then when you take it off, I think, it's no longer on the list, so do I need to bring it up again?
No, it's not, no, it just needs to get back, it needs to get on the 2012 planning calendar, which we'll do in the January, early February of the year, when we...
Well, maybe we should talk, because when I see that, when I see it's on that, on that list, I say, okay, when time becomes available, it's on somebody's list, and then when I see it's not on there, I say...
It's not like it went away, and it may seem like that to you, so, point well taken.
But, Rich, do you have a bunch of things that are, you could do on December 19th, if we want to have a meeting on December 19th and get this stuff done?
They're not ready, no.
And that brings me to my question, which is, um, I'm looking for somebody to look in their crystal ball and tell me whether December 19th is definitely off or not, I know I can't get a, a firm commitment on that, but those who schedule things, can you, can you tell me what you think?
Uh, well, we, we have been assuming that, uh, there will not be a December 19th meeting, we're not gearing up items for that, that meeting.
Let's slap the table and say there's not going to be one.
It's been a long, long tradition that you guys take second meeting in August, second meeting December off, so I've just assumed that we're going to do that.
And, but, since we got through this budget stuff tonight, there's nothing that's, like, sort of looming over us that says...
No, no.
You got to get this done, and it's going to push you to that.
Nope.
All right, so we can be, I can be pretty confident, if that's a good meeting.
Buy the tickets.
That's the question.
Okay, board appointments? We have two, and, um, I'm going to let, uh, this was from Acting Mayor, this is, this is actually, the liaison is Bruce, do you want to speak to the?
Well, I'd be happy to, the design commission, uh, is short two folks, and, uh, staff has recommended two candidates for those positions, I am pleased when I see the, the resumes of these folks, they look like very strong candidates, and, um, will be, would be pleased to have them join the design commission, so...
Okay.
Recommend Colin Brant and Hui Tian.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, council member reports, starting on this end. Jane, do you have anything?
Uh, no, attended the, um, ETP meeting on November 18th, I think it was, and, um, learned all about the terrible budget problems of County Roads Department, and they're prioritizing their roads and, um, promising to, uh, at, at least keep up with snow removal this winter, but, um, they're having budget problems, um, but that's, that's...
Did Mr. Constantine, uh, consider what happened to the former mayor of Seattle who did not fund that?
I'm sure he's watching the weather.
Dan? El? Bruce? Mike? Mike? Kay?
Uh, Jim, you called me twice, I returned both phone calls, I got a message that you called me late last night, so...
Seven o'clock late?
No, it was eight o'clock, so, for the public to understand, uh, the night before a meeting, you're going to have a discussion with me about the city manager's performance evaluation, that's a little late.
In your opinion, okay?
No, no, in, in my kid's opinion, as I was putting him to sleep.
Does anyone have anything else for the city council? Nope?
We're adjourned.
We're not adjourned.
Oh, oh, excuse me, we're not adjourned, excuse me, we're adjourned to executive session, we are going to be taking executive, uh, we have executive session to review the performance of a public employee persona to RCW forty-two dot three-zero dot one-one-zero-one-G for forty-five minutes, which would get us, why don't we go till eleven o'clock, and then I'll come out if we need more time, okay?
Thirty-five minutes, is that thirty-five minutes?